I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I see a big crowd here tonight on such a rainy, wonderful evening. Uh, if we could, uh, someone make a motion to approve our agenda?
I'll make the motion to approve the agenda.
Thank you, Randy. Second?
I'll second the motion.
Thank you, Jeff. Any discussion? All right. All right. Any folks? Here in the, uh, public comment? I know we've got a significant amount of people signed up. I would ask that if it falls under one of our special presentations, the, uh, nonprofit request, the ARPA nonprofit request for the Mills River Fire Department or so on, if you fit in one of those categories, I would just assume, and I think council would too, hear it during that presentation. That's fair. But any other, um, public comment would be willing to hear you at this time. Anyone signed up or want to speak other than something on a special presentation?
One nation. I just want to thank council for the cards, for coming to Richie's service and the beautiful flowers that arrived. Well, I was sitting up in the, in the sanctuary and they were just perfect. They, they were just what I needed. I also want to thank you for all the respect that you always gave Richie. He, he always wanted to see that park and trails on Banner Farm Road up and running. So think about that. But thank you so much for all that you do for Mills River.
Thank you. Anyone else for vote comment? Mr. Foster?
I have several comments. It probably fits in all of them. So I'll try to get them into three minutes. I asked Patty if I could have three minutes on each topic. She said, no. I'm Jim Foster and I live in Mills River and have been for 17 years. First of all, I see a lot of the fire department here tonight, uh, and I want to compliment it. We have, to me, the finest. I come from a background down in the second largest city of Florida in Georgia. And I'll put this fire and rescue department up against any of them. They're the best. This is all it is to. And I also want to compliment council. For standing up to oppose Senate Bill 317. I think there's something in the packet tonight, a resolution. That, I'm, I'm on the planning board as a lot of you know, and we spent a lot of time on or different ordinances for Mills River. And this bill would devastate, uh, zoning for Mills River. It would. And I want to commend council for taking the opposition on that. And while I'm talking about resolutions, I would also like to ask you to adopt the resolution opposing Senate Bill 265. That's the one about moving the municipal elections. Uh, that's one of the things that makes Mills River, I think, very unique is with a small community and compared to, they want to lump everything in and control everything from Raleigh. At least that's the way I see it. So I would ask you all to consider. I know that some of the, I understand that, uh, a couple of municipalities has already come out of opposing. And I'm here to ask you to do that if you would. Uh, it's in the House, I think now. And last, I want to comment on something that came up, you know, as most of y'all know, particularly council. Since I've lived here, I've been in 95% of the council meetings. So I'm well familiar with what's going on in Mills River. And I know it's on the agenda for later about the ARPA funding, and this came up at the last council meeting. And, uh, I think Councilor Young made a great point. Uh, I know that there's some churches that has applied for, uh, some of these ARPA funds, which is federal funds. And churches, we have some great churches in Mill River. I have a lot of them, probably to me, per capita, we have more churches than any place I've ever lived. And that's great. And I'm familiar with a lot of them. Matter of fact, the churches, I just say we shouldn't get into that. ARPA funds for churches and, you know, it's going to open up a can of worms. So, uh, I would say, take a look at that and stick to what Councilor Young said before. Let's stick to the original plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Foster. Anyone else, uh, for public comment? Here in nine stands, I will move on. Uh, approval of the consent agenda, please?
I make a motion that we approve the consent agenda.
Thank you, Sandra. Second?
I'll second the motion.
Thank you, Jeff. Any discussion about, about it? Here none? All in favor? All opposed? Any opposed questions up? Here none. Moving on to special presentations, uh, nonprofit request. I guess Daniel, lead us in that. Say that again?
You got to listen.
I do. This one. I got you.
So this item on your agenda tonight is, um, the annual request for nonprofits who are seeking funding for operational supporter programs that they, uh, they conduct on as part of their mission. So tonight we have several requests in front of you, um, that sign up sheet. I think Mr. Mayor is probably the best way to start and just go down the list.
Okay. Uh, would like to hear from the Housing Assistance Corporation.
Good evening, council. Um, do I need to get closer to this? Can y'all hear me?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, well, thank you for welcoming us here tonight. Um, thank you, Daniel, as well. Um, I'm here representing the Housing Assistance Corporation. Um, you guys have been able to help us with a home repair program over the past couple of years. Um, and I have put together something like four slides.
Excuse me. Can we get your name, please?
My name is Kristen Dunn and I'm the executive director. Thank you. Um, all right. And Daniel, you said touch the middle button here. Okay. Um, so some of you in this room might understand that, um, housing has been a national crisis. Um, and something that is in the news pretty often these days. Um, but since eight, 1988, one of the programs that we have offered at Housing Assistance Corporation is a home repair program. Um, two years ago, we did ask for funding to be able to provide seven needed home repairs generally for elderly individuals in Mills River. Last year, we did come to you guys and ask for funding for five necessary home repairs for folks in Mills River. Um, and this year, again, we would seek to do five necessary home repairs for homeowners in Mills River. And I will show you a couple of examples on, um, the following few slides. Um, but in, uh, the last year, we did complete 423 home repair projects. So if we do go into a home with a homeowner in Mills River, we might see that they need something like a ramp because they are experiencing limited mobility. They might need a grab bar in their bathroom, um, but they might also have a roof leak. So when we come in, we want to do a whole assessment of how to keep them aging in place instead of having to move them from their home and sometimes even condemn homes, which means that we lose houses entirely, um, which just worsens the housing crisis in our region. Um, so a few before and afters, I guess, are going to come next. Um, but this is, this is something that we did in 2021. Um, generally, we were serving elderly households, disabled households. Um, and we do health and safety, mobility and sustainability repairs. Um, we do serve the majority Henderson County. Um, and then finally, maybe we will have the photographs here. Um, so we might enter into a homeowner's home and they just haven't been able to keep up with repairs. And so they will have something like subfloor instead of flooring and we can come in and we can actually make that happen. And we'll do it, um, at no cost for most homeowners. Um, something that maybe you guys do see as you're driving around in the rural communities is the mobile homes that just have a lot of disrepair on the exterior. Um, and so if somebody did have limited mobility, they couldn't access their own home. And then we want to aim to fix that for everyone that we can. Um, and then this very last one, I was able to visit this gentleman within the last month. Um, you can see that it looks like the siding of his house was no longer, um, honestly, it wasn't keeping critters out. Um, and so, um, so we were able to come in. So the funding sources that we utilize and we're able to come to y'all and ask for special appropriations really does mean we can leverage federal, state, church, um, and then come in with the, with the money here from Mills River as well. I think that's all I got, y'all. Thank you.
Does these repairs have to, um, um, all under North Carolina building codes?
They do. So our home repair team, it consists of three individuals and two of them are contractors. And then they do subcontract for things like roofs. We don't actually have volunteers or anything doing that.
You have the projects already lined up for the ones that you wanted to do in Mills River. It's coming here.
So the wonderful, interesting, great thing about Mills River is we don't have a waiting list. So if someone maybe were to call us the day after you provide funding for us, they could probably get to the very top of the list. And then we would be going out to bid if we did need subcontractors for that, um, that very month.
So you don't currently have projects?
So we're finishing up four from last fiscal year. Um, like I said, we're supposed to do five this fiscal year. And then, um, and then as people call in, we say we'll immediately be able to get you to that top of the list. No, we don't have a crazy waiting list for Mills River.
Any more questions?
So what was the dollar amount that you're seeking?
You know, last year it looked like it was 6,500, um, somewhere around there. Yeah. Thanks, guys. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Uh, next will be Harris County Partnership for Economic Development. This is Brittany.
I'm amazed this evening. How are you all?
Good.
Oh. Well, good evening. I am Brittany Brady with the Henderson County Partnership for Economic Development, Development. And with me this evening is Mark Russell. He is our chair elect of the organization. So as many of you know, the partnership ultimately works to create and retain quality jobs in Henderson County. We serve the county and all of its municipalities. Um, as a way to attract manufacturers into the community and then take care of the 130 manufacturers that exist in our community, employing many of our friends and neighbors. We accomplish this in four different ways. First of all, we want to take care of our existing industry. As mentioned, this is where our friends and neighbors are employed. And we do this in a variety of ways. First of all, we have health checks, retention calls. Think of this as, um, getting your physical at the doctor each year. We do this for our industry as well. And making sure that they, um, we, any hurdles that they may have, we can overcome, that we can overcome, we assist them or make connections and provide resources to them. The second thing is we believe that there's strength in numbers and we have neighborhood meetings and we also have sector meetings. And so we'll bring together manufacturers in Mills River, or we might bring together like-minded industry, maybe food and beverage, for example, to have meetings. And what happens in those meetings are really great things. They overcome challenges. Maybe they deal with workforce hurdles and they share ideas. Or maybe they've all been working on one machine and they can't figure out how to make it work better. And then together they figure it out. And so, um, we do have a great manufacturing community and we take pride in our existing industry. The second thing we focus on is workforce, and this is through our maiden Henderson County initiative. This has grown leaps and bounds over the past year as we've heard more and more about workforce hurdles. Through maiden Henderson County, we have an apprenticeship program. We have tours, we have classroom presentations and ultimately want to build a pipeline of those youth in our community to go into manufacturing, but also we want to reach those in the community who might be looking for a career change or to upskill. And maiden Henderson County is our tool to focus on workforce development. Marketing and business development is often what, um, is in the headlines. That's when we're going outside of the community, telling people how great Henderson County and the town of Mills River are. And then hoping to find like-minded businesses that come into our community. We'll talk about the importance of that tax base momentarily. Um, but this is a large portion of what we do. Marketing, the business, business development is a long game. So it is something where we're building relationships over a long period of time. Um, and when there's the right opportunity, we hope the stars align. And finally, product development through the Economic Investment Fund, which is a sister organization of the partnership. We focus on product development and that would be sites and buildings. We know that there's a challenge, um, to maintain industrial sites and buildings, and we want to conserve those sites and buildings that are for industrial, um, with the highest and best use for industrial. As someone might want to conserve green space that has the highest best use for being green space. So Mills River in particular has benefited from, um, this growth that we've had through our organization. We were founded in 2006. And since that time, we've seen over a billion dollars announced in our county. Um, so we're quite proud of that. We, and that is just new investments. So that does not include necessarily legacy employers who were in the community before 2006. Additionally, since that time, we've seen over 3,370 new jobs created. We typically see manufacturing employment as a whole between 5,000 and 6,000 jobs at any given time. So it's about 12 to 15% of our workforce. Mills River, as mentioned, has benefited from this, seeing over $500 million in investment, um, and over 1,300 new jobs. So that's roughly half of, um, that growth that we've seen. And again, this is just new investments. It doesn't always capture when somebody's adding on to their facility and it doesn't capture anything that was in the county or the town before 2006. Total industries within the town are 23 and as mentioned, we have about 130 in the county. So the Economic Investment Fund, as mentioned, is a sister organization to the partnership. We were set up as a separate entity, um, due to taxing purposes. That's a C3 partnership is a C6 and that's how we needed to fund workforce and product development. So what's interesting is in July of 2022, Henderson County purchased the remaining acreage in Ferncliff Park. Thank you, Commissioner Lapsley. Um, that was a $4 million purchase. We want to continue to secure that for industrial land. But we anticipate the site prep per acre to be about 250,000. Quick math, that's going to be $6 million, give or take, just to, um, develop out those 33 acres. We hope that that can grow with some other surrounding acreage and we'll have another 100 acres per industrial use in an established industrial park. This is a real opportunity for the town to come in and support that. We always say that manufacturing pays the bills and what we mean is that manufacturing of businesses and their equipment are taxed the same way our homes are. But I've never driven by your park and seen a CNC machine out there. And so what we know is that industry provides 30% of the tax base in the county, but only 12% of the services. So when GF Lenamar is buying a new piece of machinery and equipment, you know, those tax dollars are coming into your community, but they're not using your services specifically here in the park. As a reminder, 17% of industry is in Mills River, 61% of investment is in Mills River, and 55% of new job creation is in Mills River. However, Mills River only funds the partnership at 75% of its peers and only funds EIF at 10% of its peers. And we can see that through contributions. We are a public-private organization and you can see what, um, other municipalities and our public funding partners support the work that we do. And the town of Mills River came in this year at 15,000 for the partnership and 5,000 for EIF. So for fiscal year 24, we're requesting all of our municipal partners to come up to $25,000. Um, you all have felt inflation. We have felt inflation as an organization and we've also had to add some staffing to the increase in responsibilities that we have as an organization. Additionally, we're requesting that Mills River, um, mimic some of its peers and come in at 25,000 for EIF. Again, there's a specific need in the town of Mills River with Ferncliff Park. This is an opportunity we haven't had before. Um, last year it was not publicly owned. Now it's publicly owned and we'd love to see our public partners help us move that forward. And I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions? Appreciate you coming out. Appreciate everything y'all do.
All right. Thank you so much. We appreciate your support.
Uh, next is Lions Club of Mills River.
Ladies and gentlemen of the town council, my name is Jack Grant. I'm a member of the Lions Club of Mills River. We're a 501(c)(3) organization. Our club and, uh, what I'm here to ask for is a $25,000 grant. I'll start that right there, but I'll explain what we do and why. Uh, the Lions, our club and the Etowah Lions Club provide free vision screening of the elementary schools in Henderson and Haywood Counties. Grades one, three, five, and seven as required by the state. The device we use is a Welch Allen Spot Vision Camera. We screen approximately 10,000 students a year. 15% of whom need to see an eye doctor. That was surprising to me when we put the numbers together. The device readings are acceptable to the state. We detect about eight different, well, it's easy to say that. Nearsighted, farsighted, uh, unequal refractive power, astigmatism, a blurred vision, pupil size and deviation. This is all done in about 30 seconds. It's surprising how fast. And when I started doing this a few years ago, I thought, man, how many hours have we put into this? For Glenn Marlowe Elementary with a population of about 500 kids in these four grades. We do the screening with two cameras in approximately three and a half hours. The school nurse formally required about three days to do this with the help of the health ed classes at West High School. We would like to provide free screening to the people of Mills River in a mobile setting. We attend a number of the local events as Farm Day, Farmer's Market and others. Uh, to do this, we need an area which is semi-dark, but without the sun's UV rays. We bought a blackout tent not too long ago. I was hoping they would do it. Tried it, though the ad said the canopy was enclosed and blocked the UV rays. It didn't to the extent we needed. A few years ago, we did a joint event with the, uh, Mills River Fire Department at Jackson Park. They had an RV they use for education purposes. We did vision screening in it and all, it all worked well. In talking with Camping World and Miles RV, we could purchase a small used camper for around $20,000. With modifications for our use, around $5,000 more. That's the 25 grand. I submitted the grant proposal on March 31st, but I didn't realize I didn't do so correctly. Mr. Cobb filed the request and has turned it over to you guys. Uh, any questions?
Any questions?
Do y'all get any other grants to help subsidize?
No. Uh, we have gotten a grant to buy cameras. We have, we have two right now, giving a third. I can't tell you is from, uh, Western North Carolina. It's not coming back. But that's, that's the, that's what we've gotten for that. The cameras are $7,000 apiece.
Okay.
Are you, you feel like you'd be able to service more of?
Oh, that's the whole idea.
Okay.
Uh, if we can, if we can go to these local events, what are, part of the $5,000 is getting a generator to go with the camera. So we have electricity. Uh, like Farm Day, that's coming. We're signed up for that. Uh, I'll have a canopy there and, uh, you know, just routine showing what the Lions Club does. Uh, but if we could have, if we carry something around with us, which could create a dark room. That would work. We could do that and we could service, you know, there are a lot of events here in Mills River. And that's what we like to do. Any other?
Any other question?
Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Smart Start.
Good evening. Thanks so much for having us here tonight. My name is Eric Woodall and this is Kendall Heck. And we are here from Smart Start Partnership for Children. Um, we're going to talk about a couple of activities that we provide that we've requested support for from the town of Mills River. The first is the Dolly Parton Imagination Library. And the Dolly Parton Imagination Library is an early literacy activity that mails registered children a new age-appropriate book each month from birth or whenever they register until the month that they turn five years old. Um, the books are, I brought some examples because they are beautiful and high quality and children love to receive them. And if a child is registered at birth, they can receive up to 60 books by the time they turn five. And so they end up with the library of books that they learn to love. Um, I mentioned that. Um, the books are free in their age appropriate. The most amazing thing about the Dolly Parton Imagination Library books is that they are provided at no cost for families. And so young children receive a book in the mail each month at no cost to their family. Smart Start is paying about $30 for a child to receive a book in the mail each month for 12 months. And all of our funding at Smart Start has to go to support activities that are evidence-based, that evidence-informed. And we have to be able to demonstrate that we're having an impact with the funds that we administer. And so we do a lot of surveys to make sure that our activities are doing what they're supposed to do. And what we've learned is that receiving books through the Dolly Parton Imagination Library does increase frequent parent-child reading by 29% in all households, by 83% in Spanish-speaking households, and by 67% in lower-income households. And so it increases frequent parent-child reading in all homes and even more in a higher risk, um, homes with young children. We are currently providing the Dolly Parton Imagination Library books for 3,467 children in Henderson County, and of those 309 live in Mills River. And so that means we're spending approximately $9,000, I don't know, $270 to provide books for young children in Mills River, and we're asking for support from the town of Mills River for some of that. So we've requested $5,000 to help pay for Dolly Parton Imagination Library books. And that is for a couple of reasons. The first is that the cost to provide these books in our community has increased recently just because the Dolly Parton Imagination Library is running into increased costs related to shipping materials, just like the rest of the world. Um, and also because we are working to offer this opportunity to more children and families. And so to, um, provide books for more children in this community. Um, and I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to Kendall Heck now to talk about kindergarten transition. Would you, yeah, would you rather ask questions separately or together?
No. Anybody have any questions for her before she step up?
I don't have a question, but I do, um, my house or my child were one of the 309. So thank you.
Yeah, that's great.
Okay. Any other question? You know, if you'd step up?
Hello, um, yeah, Erica. As Erica mentioned, my name is Kendall Heck and I'm the kindergarten transition coordinator for the county. Um, and I just want to talk to you guys about something that you fun, helped fund last year, which was the kindergarten transition work in Mills River and Henderson County. Um, and you, um, supported us with $10,000 last year and we were asking for that same amount. Um, so I just wanted to kick off with this because I feel like it just, um, kind of brings to light what our mission is in our kindergarten transition work. The only way we can successfully ensure that many more children enter schools ready to learn is to consider, um, the family and community context in which they live, the schools that they attend, and the services that are available to support their healthy growth and development. Um, so that is kind of our big goal here. Um, we talked to you last year about our ready initiative and this work that we're doing, and it is growing tremendously because we do have 13 schools in our district. We have, um, kindergarten transition teams at all of the schools on the bottom, and we are adding the final, um, four schools next year as well. So, um, currently right now, Mills River and Glenn Marlowe both have kindergarten transition teams and have both been blessed by your funding um, in order to do some really cool things that I will share with you in a second. Um, so more than 20% of our kids in Henderson County are being serviced and impacted by this initiative that attend and live in Mills River. Um, and so, um, what some of those activities look like, um, we have the kindergarten readiness rallies, which are individual rallies for families to come onto campus, see the school before school starts, um, have interaction with teachers, staff, receive, um, we, we packed 900 kindergarten readiness bags this year that helps supply families with materials to go home with and work on skills. And they're like fun, interactive ones like lacing cubes and Play-Doh and scissors and all that. Um, and then, uh, we have, uh, observation setup. We have been able to pay early childhood teachers to participate on these teams because the kindergarten readiness teams, Nicole is on two of my teams, both Mills River. But, um, we have kindergarten teachers, principals, community partners, um, parks and rec, church leadership, anybody that wants to be a part of that process and have input on how children are being served, um, in our, in our community, they're welcome. Um, some other cool things that we're doing through, um, both Mills River and Glenn Marlowe is we are doing playdates at the park this summer. So that families can come, they can connect with one another, they can, um, meet friends before the first day of school and have that friendly face whenever they walk in the first day and they're all nervous. Um, we have, uh, preschool tours, a bunch of amazing things that are going down, um, that are supported through this plan. Another thing that we were add, able to add to activities this year were that are supported through this plan. Another thing that we were add, able to add to activities this year were kindergarten Q and As and we were able to support um, spaces for that and staff for that, um, and we had great turnout. We had um, hopes maybe because we did it when it was cold and there's not a space here, but we had it at the Etowah Public Library and that's the bottom picture right there and the majority of the people at that, um, uh, session were from Mills River and attending Mills River, Glenn Marlowe. Um, and then the other really cool big thing is I don't know if anyone attended last year, but we have partnered with Sesame Street and Communities and that is something that we are also pushing out and offering and we're building kits for, for families to reach them um, and support them in their transition to kindergarten work. Um, one of the things that I would be doing a disservice to our community if I didn't briefly touch on it is, um, the childcare crisis and childcare crisis definitely impacts kindergarten transition work and the work that we're doing for outreach. Um, so right now you have currently a hundred and seventy-eight, more than twenty percent students out of the eight hundred and sixty-seven students currently enrolled in kindergarten in Henderson County Public Schools. Um, and right now also in Mills River, we only have one private care facility for children and we have three in-home, um, cares, uh, facilities for children. So we only have, and this is if teachers are fully staffed, forty slots for kids. Um, and as you know, there, there is the cost of childcare is just going up, 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 up. And then we have a lot of people coming in, 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 in. And so these kids are not being serviced. And the big transition work that we're talking about and building that bridge between the early childhood world and kindergarten is that this work starts at birth and that we need to be reaching these kiddos. Um, so I just want to share this fact about Henderson County. Um, underneath or six and under, we have six thousand two hundred and seventy-five kids. Out of that group of kids, only one thousand two hundred and eighty-seven, seven of them are being served in a licensed care facility. Sorry, I'm getting a little nervous. And then, um, three hundred and fifty of them are being served in a half-day. Half-days do not have to be licensed. It's usually the church preschools and stuff. But that just goes to show that only twenty percent of our children are being served somewhere. So, um, I just wanted to build that awareness because it does impact heavily the, the outreach that we're doing in our kindergarten transition work that we're not just going to the preschools, like we have to find these kids. We need to have eyes on these kids. We need to, um, make sure that they're getting serviced and, um, that we're preparing them for success. So just the little fun fact that ninety percent of a child's brain develop, um, development happens before the age of five. And so that's a lot of work being done, um, in those little kids and we just, we, if we value um, our community, we have to value our, our littles, um, because they are our future. Um, so I just also, and in this ask, I also welcome you all to the table. We have a workforce, um, task force that is coming together to try to help solve this childcare crisis and I welcome all of you, all of you, um, to that table because this is not going to go away and it's only going to get worse. So that is what I have for you. Thank you for supporting the mission of reaching and educating and advocating for our kids in our community.
Any questions?
All right, thank you.
Uh, next is the Mills River Farmer's Market.
Good evening. I want to thank the council and the mayor and the town staff for allowing us to come tonight. Also want to appreciate all the help the town has given us for our double dollars program for the Mills River Farm Market. That's who I represent. By the way, my name's Joe Britton.
And I'm Linda Britton.
And, uh, I am, I think the director. I change my title regularly. We won't go by far. A lot of them call me, but we'll, you know. But I want to say appreciate all the help the town has given us for our double dollars program and our operating expenses in the twenty-two and twenty-three years. Uh, this year we're back. We've got some other plans. We were trying to grow. Uh, I'm told we need to get out of the twentieth century and join the twenty-first. So we are actually wanting to create a website. Is one of the things we're asking for funding for. And, uh, I hope you don't have detailed questions on this for me because I am very computer illiterate, but we will get you an answer if you have something. I can't make up something that sounds good. We also are starting a Mills River Farm Market Volunteer Group, Friends of Mills River Volunteer Group. And we're wanting, uh, to purchase a few vests for them to wear and then volunteer appreciation items to give out as thank yous for all the work they're, they'll be doing to help us. And our third project is, uh, public relations and promotional items for public events. Um, we need a new banner. Uh, we're wanting to get one of the spinners to let people that we've barred one a few times at events. That's a big draw. And then promotional items to give away to customers and potential customers. So our total requests for this is two thousand dollars. And once in, I want to thank y'all for your past support and look forward to continuing to work with you on this and many more projects in the future.
Okay. Any questions for the Brittons? No? Thank y'all for presenting. Uh, next is, uh, Literacy Connection.
Hi. You may remember me. We used to be Blue Age Literacy Council and, uh, in December we had rebranded to Literacy Connection. So still great organization that we have been for thirty years, just with a new name, new logo to show some inclusivity. Um, we thank you for your past support and so, um, we're here again today to ask for similar amount of twenty-five hundred dollars to continue to grow our programming here in Mills River. So literacy in the United States, we talked about this even last year, but forty-three million Americans are not able to read, write, or compute math above the third grade level. Um, that, out of that thirty percent are native English speakers. So oftentimes we have people think that we're only serving those that don't speak English, but that's not true. We also serve those who are low literate or illiterate. Um, part of that is also just digital literacy skills. Part of that is financial literacy skills and it's health literacy skills. So we are trying to expand and meet the needs of our community in many different ways. So we do serve the whole of Henderson County and we use data from the community health assessment. So in this data, about ten percent identify that they could, um, as Hispanic or Latin in the community. Um, we also though have that five point three percent that are Asian and on what we've learned when we came to work in the schools here in Mills River is that there is a growing micro-Nesian population here in Mills River, um, seeking English language skill development. So a lot of our employment sectors here, um, from that assessment, um, these are our top employment sectors. And so we heard from the partnership and other things. This is nothing new to you, but this is a lot of where our, uh, you know, our students are employed is in the lower trades and things like that nature. And they fall in these poverty levels and literacy and poverty have a great connection. And so what we're trying to do is enhance the workforce development in this area, uh, so we can provide great employees for the employers seeking them in this community. Uh, we have identified those needs through our employers. Um, many of our students are actually employed here in Mills River, um, through the agricultural, um, facilities here. Uh, many of them are working towards gaining English language skills and becoming citizens so that they can be part of a stronger workforce here. Um, this is a, this is a slide and we often meet our students, but if you look at this slide, forty point three percent of our Hispanic community say they often worry about if they're going to run out of food or not. And again, it's because they usually have our lower paying, uh, job opportunities, again, because their English isn't as much as they could if they, um, developed that. They also worry about paying rent or they're stressed about paying mortgages. And we could go through stories, but I won't tonight, uh, just for time's sake. But it is something of an issue with these population and we are here to try and assist that. But also our low-level, uh, literacy folks are also have the, the same anxieties because they're not able to get those jobs that are going to pay them that living wage. So we serve Mills River right now. Um, we've served in the past about forty-two percent participants as a whole. Um, we have one board trustee that lives here in Mills River, two staff that are currently, um, reside here. Currently we have eight students and, um, we have some students on a waiting list and we have six current tutors that are from this area. Uh, since twenty eighteen, we've had twenty-six, um, students go through the program that resided here in Mills River. Um, this was something that you asked last year and so I wanted to make sure you at least knew the numbers of what we're doing here in Mills River. Um, and we also will add to that when I get to a program that we did in the elementary school. We serve adult learners. That is our, our, they are most of our focus. Um, also our pre, um, adults, whichever are teenagers. We serve those who are looking to get a GED. They're looking to get a certificate and need a little bit of help. We also serve those who are looking for English language skills. Um, although the most of our population is a Spanish-speaking, we are seeing a rise in our Ukrainian, um, population request for English language skills and are just now learning of the micro-Nesian population seeking that as well. Um, going back to that slide too, we also serving our senior community. We are going into some of our senior, um, centers and helping them with digital literacy. It is so important. Um, studies show that if our, if you're connected to your healthcare, uh, if you know your doctors and can get ahold of them, if you can see what your medications are, all this is done on a portal now. All this is online. And many of our seniors just don't trust it and don't understand it and just simply cannot even work a mouse to get to it. And so we are really ramping up our digital literacy skills in that area as well as with some of our displaced workers. So we do student and goal center tutoring. I just talked about this. We do it for increased digital skills, um, English language skills. Uh, citizenship is a big one too. Right now we have, um, we just had number seven become a citizen this year. So we're looking forward to having about three more. They all have their examination date set. And so we're continually working with folks that are looking to become a US citizen. So family literacy is what we, um, also have brought here to Mills River Elementary. We are just completing it next week. You can join the party. We're having a potluck there at Mills River after school on Thursday. Um, but these are the moms that came in to come and learn about the process that our schools use. Um, and they're always very enlightened, um, to understand what is the process. And then what we learned is they never go to anything. They never talk to anyone because they're so afraid because they don't understand. So we had the school administrator come and speak to the five moms there to tell them about all of the things that, that they are given and what they mean. And for a couple of years, because some of these parents have already kids in school, they just have a couple of youngsters at home too. They had no idea what their, what their child was missing upon because they didn't understand the process of the school system. So we gave those parents confidence now to be able to go into the front office and find someone to speak to and help them out. And as well, we helped the preschoolers then who probably have never spoken English before or around any English speakers, be around English speakers and get them ready to either get to preschool or to kindergarten. So we've been very excited to be able to do that at Mills River Elementary, um, this semester and, uh, we hope to do more. Again, this is a Spanish-speaking program. Um, we did have about half a dozen or so moms that spoke micro-Nesian that wanted to be part of the program. So we're trying to find a way to help them out as well. We also do homework club. So we serve students that attend West High School as well as Rugby Middle School. Um, they can come to our location and be dropped off and we have a couple of students from those schools that are coming and receiving help, especially in math. Um, we're, we're seeing a, a rise in students not being able to pass their math tests or their math classes. And so we have a drop-in homework club on Tuesdays and Wednesdays afternoons where kids are getting helped by about three guys right now who all have their PhD in math. And they're having a marvelous time there, uh, getting their homework done. So we are serving some of our folks here, uh, at the high school and middle school level. So what we want to do with twenty-five hundred dollars is just helps our whole program as a whole. Um, but we'd like to continue to focus time here in Mills River. We will be here, uh, on tomorrow, uh, Saturday. Uh, Healthy Kids Day at the YMCA is doing, uh, but we want to come and be more, uh, visible at some of the events, the farmer's market, other events here in the park. Um, but we just need to get some more marketing materials and things of that nature to let the community know that we are here as a free service to them. Uh, we want to be able to recruit more tutors and just bring awareness to all the partnerships and all of the ways that we connect to other organizations in the community like Smart Start, um, for children. So we're just requesting that twenty-five hundred dollars takes about one thousand dollars for a whole year of tutoring. If that were to be in the private sector, it's about fifty dollars an hour and that would cost someone two thousand dollars a year to get that kind of tutoring that we provide. Um, but we do it for a thousand dollars very efficiently, um, but we always ask for that assistance. We are receiving assistance from the city of Hendersonville as well as Henderson County as well.
Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, Mills River Life Enrichment Center, you're next.
Good evening. My name is Ruth Williams and I represent the Mills River Life Enrichment Center. We are a senior adult program. We meets every Thursday morning for the seniors in our community who are aging at home. It gives them a place to come and have fellowship. We do, um, a matter of fact, the Lions Club's come to do vision screening. So we are using their services on June the eighth. We do blood pressure checks. We have magazine book swaps. Um, just dixie puzzle swaps, anything to get them out of the house, keep their minds active, their bodies moving. We do cheer exercises with them every week. And it's, it's just to give them a place to come that is safe and we always serve lunch. Um, I think you may have our report that I sent in. Last year, twenty twenty-two, we had forty-five weekly programs. We had attendance of three thousand one hundred and fifty-one seniors come through our doors. And that averaged out to seventy senior adults a week. We had pickup or delivery. We had third, one thousand three hundred and fifty-six lunches. These are lunches that are picked up by caretakers or couples that used to come and one of the spouses is physically unable to come, but we still keep in touch with them. And they, one of them can come and pick up the meal. So we do have contact to know what's going on in the home. Um, total lunches served for twenty twenty-two were four thousand five hundred and seven. And our food cost is our biggest expense right now. In twenty twenty-two, we spent nineteen thousand seven hundred eighty-nine dollars for just food, which averages only to four thirty-nine a person. So that's pretty good. But as all of us know, groceries just keep going up and up and up. So we anticipate the food cost to be even more for the coming year. Um, two, one, well, a couple of points to make. We are getting local businesses to sponsor our programs, which is great. They range from fifty dollars to a hundred and fifty and they get, the business gets to come in and advertise. So that's the way that we are utilizing the businesses in the community, plus it cuts down our cost. Um, we did lose funding from Pizca Health Foundation. From now on, they're only doing home and structural repairs. So that's one that we lost. And also the Western North Carolina Bridge Foundation, they're not funding anybody this year because they're reevaluating their program. So it wasn't anything personal, but that was funding that we've gotten in the past. Um, but we would, we are coming tonight to ask, uh, for the request of ten thousand dollars for the coming year to help us with our operating expenses, which like I said, mainly is food. Do you have any questions?
Any questions?
What was the total of the funding that you lost?
Um, we got two thousand from Western North Carolina Bridge Foundation the year well, for twenty twenty-two. We had been with Pizca Health Foundation for two cycles, which would have been twenty thousand dollars. It was ten thousand each time.
Any other questions? You're not?
Okay, all right. Thank you for your time.
And that's all I have on my signup sheet. Uh, we'll move on. We'll get on to, uh,
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Real quickly, I just wanted to mention that Mark Williams sends his regrets from Ag HC. He was not able to make it tonight. Uh, he, he did send in his, his, uh, letter that he sends in every year and they're requesting seventeen thousand dollars this year, which is just a slight increase over last year, uh, three percent.
Okay. All right. Okay, we'll move on to the, uh, Greater Asheville Airport Authority Annual Report. Mr. Luke. Sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of town council. I appreciate the appreciate the time this evening and letting me give you the address of where we are for the the end of twenty-twenty-two. Uh, even though it's twenty-three, I'd like to go back and talk about what the operational's uh, successes were for the airport. Uh, that's our two, that's our twenty-twenty-two annual report. It's an operation report that I gave you. Uh, I'll be highlighting it. Won't be specifically speaking about it directly. Uh, from an air service perspective, uh, we had six carriers operate at the airport in twenty-twenty-two. Those were Allegiant, American, Delta, JetBlue, Sun Country, and United. We had twenty-five destinations nonstop from Asheville. Won't go through all of them, but the three new ones we we added last year was Austin, Texas, Miami, Florida, and uh, Destin, Florida, were the three new routes that we added. Our passenger counts uh, for twenty-twenty-two was one million eight hundred and thirty-eight thousand seven hundred ninety-three, which was up twenty-nine percent from the prior year. And uh, it was up thirteen and a half percent from two thousand and nineteen, which was our high watermark. Uh, so twenty-twenty-two was our highest record of passengers served at the airport. With that being said, that makes us the third largest commercial service airport in the state of North Carolina, following Charlotte and Raleigh-Durham. Uh, so hopefully we're going to ride that way for a little while. Uh, we surpassed uh, Greensboro. The seats in the market in twenty-twenty-two were one million one hundred and sixteen thousand, which was up twelve percent from a seat aircraft uh, perspective. Operations airlines were up to twenty-six thousand eight seventy-four, which was a one percent increase. Operations are really flat. Seats were up because the airlines are putting in larger aircraft versus the smaller regionals that we've used seen in the past. Generally, uh, general aviation and military operations were fifty-two thousand one hundred and fifty-seven, which was up six point three percent. From a construction standpoint, uh, we updated our South General Aviation Ramp and roughly a cost of five and a half million dollars. Uh, we added and worked on a new airfield electrical vault room, roughly six point two million dollars. And we started on the central energy plant, which is the uh, forerunner of our new terminal building. That was a, that's an eighty million dollar contract that was let forty million for the actual central energy plant and forty million dollars for long lead time items like baggage uh, equipment, lo- uh, loading bridges and HVAC equipment. And then we also added a uh, a new cell phone lot and a north uh, general aviation parking lot to to help with our overflow parking. That was roughly a million dollars. From a community perspective, uh, we held our runway five K. We maxed out at a thousand runners, which is what we do every year. Uh, we ended up raising twenty thousand dollars uh, that we ended up uh, in in net profit uh, that we ended up uh, distributing half of it to AB Tech Aviation Fund for air uh, for aviation pilot training and also Western North Carolina Pilot Association's Foundation also for pilot training, which helps uh, in the pilot shortage that's affecting this country. We uh, also engaged in local art and musicians. And then our ABL Gives Program, which is our employees at the Airport Authority, we ended up uh, contributing over seven thousand dollars uh, to various charities. And we participated in United Waythings and also various holiday sponsorships uh, for the holidays. Uh, we had a a return of our pars pause for passenger program, which is our therapy dogs that walk to the terminal with their handlers, uh, relieving stress and tension of those flyers that are outbound. And then, of course, we continue our Blue Ridge Honor Flight, uh, honoring those veterans that have fought fought in previous wars uh, on those fights. From a financial situation, the operating revenues from the airport was nineteen million eight hundred eighty-nine thousand dollars. Operating expenses was ten point four million dollars, leaving us a net of nine point four million dollars to go back into capital projects. At the end of uh, twenty-twenty-two, our assets uh, a uh, our assets for the Airport Authority um, was equivalent to two hundred and thirty-six million five hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars, which was an increase of approximately thirty point six million dollars over twenty-twenty-one. That concludes my report, Mr. Mayor and Town Town Council. Be happy to answer any questions that you all may have.
Any questions? I got one.
Sure.
What's going on where we, they cut trees down between two eighty and everybody's wanting to know it?
We actually did two tree removal projects, one in the south and one on the north. And one in the south was the first just past the a triangle gas station in the Dunkin' Donuts. That is a future parking lot. Uh, it's a going to be a six hundred and fifty space shuttle lot that has augmented everything that we need from a parking perspective. The tree clearing to the north that we ended up doing, as you see off, coming off of I twenty-six, um, it ended up being a visual issue with the radar system for the FAA. Uh, and so they had they had some blind spots because of the trees. It will be areas that we will, you know, develop out in the future. But right now, the main reason why we took those trees down was because of the safety issue that the FAA needed to have those trees uh, cut down. So and uh, terminal is underway. You'll see me again next year with what's going on with the terminal, but we just had another successful bond sale today. We have all the funds necessary uh, to move forward with the terminal expansion. So you'll hear more about that in the months to come. Thank you for your time. Appreciate it.
Okay, moving on. Mills River Fire Department and Rescue Budget. Mr. Livingston, I guess you want to present or how do you want to do this?
It's up to you.
Um, how many people we got for public comment input into this? Yeah, we got a couple. Um, if it's all right with council, I'd like to hear from them first and then maybe Rick can answer any questions they might have while he's up. Is that okay? Sure. We're going to take this two minute break. Back up and running. Well, he's ready. So at this point, uh, let's see, who do we have wanting to speak on this behalf? I know Mr. Weber did one in the back. We'll start with Mr. Weber and then we'll go to you, okay?
Thank you for recognizing me.
Absolutely.
Thank you for allowing me some time this evening. Uh, again, my name's Phil Weber. Uh, I wasn't born here in Mills River, uh, but I got here as quickly as I could. And I have found my little bit of paradise uh, on South Mills River. I've only been here fifty-two years, but like most of my neighbors, uh, I've seen remarkable changes uh, in Mills River. Uh, when we first moved here, I think there were something like thirty-seven uh, family-owned dairies. Uh, where we used to grow cows and milk, uh, we're now growing homes and businesses. Uh, so it's been, it's been remarkable change. We've been very fortunate in Mills River, uh, because we've had forward-looking people, uh, of which you are a driving force. We've uh, you've had vision and you've had wisdom to uh, to plan for the future, anticipate and make the right decisions to make this community uh, a really desirable uh, place to live. So thank you. A perfect example of what you've accomplished here uh, is our emergency services, uh, fire and rescue. They're the cream of the crop. Uh, they're the best that there is. Two uh, two aspects uh, bear this out. I'm not just bragging on them, uh, but there are two things. First, our department's workers' compensation modification factor is less than one. I'm a business guy and I watch workers' compensation uh, modification factor like a hawk. If you're over one, there are places where my company can't work. Uh, if you're under one, uh, that's a clear indication that you are uh, you are circumspect, uh, you are safety oriented and you are preventing your people from day-to-day injuries. Uh, Mills River Fire Department uh, has a uh, modification factor under one. They're protecting their people uh, who are exposed to all kinds of dangers, unpredictable circumstances, uh, and sometimes very tragic uh, situations. Uh, the other thing uh, that is a testament to management and supervision in the fire department uh, is their ISO certification. There, they are a class three, they have a class three ISO certification. Uh, that's as good as it gets. Uh, and this certification uh, gives us two economic bonuses. The first is our fire department taxes here in Mills River are low. Uh, and with that certification, uh, homeowner insurance premiums are also low because insurance companies generous as they are, uh, recognize, recognize performance. And uh, our emergency services do perform and we have a very, very safe and good community to live in. My purpose in speaking here tonight is uh, is simply to say thank you to the men and women of our fire department. Uh, many of these people are volunteer, uh, they give of their time, uh, and they make our uh, our community safe and enjoyable. Uh, and I would just suggest that we all recognize the uh, the benefit that they convey to us uh, that we're appreciative and we support them. I don't want any money. Thank you. I just want to say thank you.
Thank you. You go, come on up. And I'll remind everybody in this public speaking uh, comment portion of it, we're trying to limit it as close to three minutes as we can, just because we got a bunch of people on the list for other things coming later on tonight. But I expected it.
Mr. Mayor, uh, members of the council. My name's Chief Mike Huggins. I'm with Etowah Horse U Fire Department. I actually think we live in the greatest area in the gr- area of the country that is supported by the greatest citizens and the communities that we could ever hope for. Most all fire departments, especially Chief Livingston in the town and the community of Mills River, supports his department wholeheartedly. One thing though, is our area is growing, whether it's my fire district or Chief Livingston's. Mills River, as y'all know, is growing in leaps and bounds. Anytime that an area grows, the services that we provide have to grow with that. Um, it's kind of like keeping up with the Joneses. You got to keep up with it or you're going to be behind. Once fire departments fall behind on those objectives and keeping up, it's really hard and takes a lot longer, a lot more time to to catch back up. Chief Livingston and his department has done an incredible job. The one great thing about living here is it's still kind of uh, Mayberry. We all still know each other. We grew up in the same neighborhoods. Even people that move in here fall in love with this place because it's still so small and it's it's good-natured people. Um, people talk. You get to know what your neighbors are doing. The fire services know different. When we hear rumblings in the fire service, it kind of spreads through the county like wildfire. Um, one of the things we've been hearing, and I will not use the word defund because it is um, political in nature and it seems to be the political go-to, but I will use the word underphone. And the fire service in Henderson County, it is rumored that uh, this council has looked at underfunding Mills River Fire. I would employ this council to realize that the grave mistake that would be. Anytime that you defund these fire departments, whether it's mine or anybody else's, um, directly affects the lives and the property that these guys have sworn to protect. Um, with that being said, um, lives are on the line, whether it is a citizen or whether it's one of these guys or gals that go out on these calls and not giving them the funding or not giving them the support that they need can actually cause the loss of life, the loss of property and the loss of a member in this community, being one of these uh, men or women from this fire department. Um, it also affects the surrounding uh, districts. A lot of people don't realize that, you know, we're one or the other. One of us is in each other's fire districts all the time. Uh, my department, Mills River Fire and Rescue, has a longstanding first due mutual aid agreement. That means when Mills River needs backup, we're the first department they call. If I need backup, I need more, we have more calls than we can handle. I'm going to call Chief Livingston. His people are going to come help me. Uh, that uh, agreement goes back decades. I've been in the fire service for thirty-seven years and that agreement uh, predates me. Probably goes back to when Etowah Mills River got established. Uh, case in point, earlier this month, we were on a structure fire in a very remote section of our fire district. Uh, while we were on that call, we didn't have anybody else we could turn loose. Chief Livingston and a few of his department members handled a serious medical emergency that we would not have anybody to go to. Cutting funding to this department actually would hamper them being able to help us in our time of need. Our departments, two departments work well together and understand the level of help and service that we provide to each other. Another case in point is uh, during Mills River Spire Department's uh, upcoming building dedication, uh, our department will be providing trucks and manpower to cover Mills River Spire District so they can enjoy the day with the citizens that uh, they proudly protect and serve daily. Uh, I will say this, the Chief Livingston with his uh, officers through the years, they have built a dedicated, they have trained, recruited, trained and built a dedicated volunteer fire department force that money or gold or anything else can't buy. It's free. So Mills River Fire Department needs to be commended for the service that they provide to this uh, fire district. And the people that live in Mills River can sleep well at night, knowing that they are well protected. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, anyone else for public comment on the fire departments before I have Mr.? Got one more.
Right quick, I'm uh, Terry Young with the Office of State Fire Marshal. And in the state of North Carolina, there are twelve hundred and nineteen fire departments. This gentleman here mentioned about the class three. In North Carolina, there is a hundred and seven fire departments that are a class three fire department, including Mills River. And in Henderson County, there are five class three fire departments, which includes Mills River. And uh, I'm here to answer any questions on behalf of the State Fire Marshal's Office, if anybody has any.
It would be in my impression with that class C that Mills River's looks outstanding on paper and physical uh, workmanship.
Absolutely.
At a state level, correct?
Absolutely. And they are inspected every five years.
And it's my understanding that that level three helps each uh, resident of Mills River with their potentially their insurance rate?
That's correct. Their fire insurance rating.
Okay.
It does. Business and industry and residential.
Okay. Any more questions?
Do you have any numbers like what a class three or a class four would save an average homeowner?
It varies from insurance companies. It 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 really does. That would be something that you would be better to ask the insurance.
Ask the insurance.
Yeah, ask the insurance.
Anything else for Mr. Young?
Thanks, sir.
If there's no one else, I'm going to ask Mr. Livingston to get up speaking behalf of the fire department.
I'm not sure that we're deserving of all those kind remarks, but uh, to all who have made those, thank you very much. Uh, good evening and thanks for allowing us to be here. For those who may not know me, I'm Rick Livingston, Fire Chief of Mills River Fire and Rescue. I'm a native of Mills River and I've lived here my entire life, except when I was in college. I've been a Mills River firefighter for forty-five years. The first thirty-five years as a volunteer. I've been honored to serve as your fire chief for twenty-four of those years. The past ten as a full-time The past ten as a full-time career fire chief. And I would just say this, and I'm not asking for a thank you or a pat on the back or any of that. Uh, but I and many others. Have worked really hard for many years to provide excellent fire and rescue service to this community. As efficiently as we possibly could. And again, thanks to those who made comments. On March tenth, this past March tenth. Town council met for a visioning session. Which I, correct me, Mr. Mayor, but I believe the, the purpose of that visioning session. Is to plan for the future. And I hope that everyone in Mills River is either watching or listening this evening. And please go to the town's website and watch this recorded visioning session. And you will see that everything I'm telling you tonight is true and accurate. During this meeting, Jeff Young and Sandra Goode both made several false statements and accusations. Against Mills River Fire and Rescue. And I think it's extremely important to note. That Shannon, Randy and James. Have all been to the fire department at different times to visit and ask questions. Uh, and they've called me from time to time on the phone when they've had questions about Mills River Fire Department. Jeff Young and Sandra Goode, on the other hand, have never been to the fire department for that reason. To ask me anything or to educate, uh, themselves on the fire department. In a nutshell, you have three council members that have tried to learn about the fire department. And educate themselves at least a little bit on what we do and what we're all about. And you have two, Jeff and Sandra, who have not done that. Yet it's these same two, Jeff and Sandra, who have stirred up a hornet's nest and made these false statements against the fire department. Is it just ignorance on their parts or are they trying to throw the fire department under the bus? I can't answer that question. I have no idea what their thoughts or intentions are. If any elected or appointed officials make statements against Mills River Fire Department. That are not true, three things are going to happen. Number one, I'll stand up publicly as I am tonight. Number two, I'll speak the truth, just as I always do. And number three, I'll let all the good folks of Mills River know what's going on. I don't have time tonight to correct all of those false statements that were made, but there are five. That are very blatant and I feel like I have to address those and correct them. Number one, Jeff said that the fire department had not, had not provided budgets. And financial information to the town. This is totally false. Every single year since this town was incorporated. We have always provided this information to the town manager. I believe in following the chain of command, so that's the reason that this information has gone to the town manager. If Jeff had bothered to ask us or town staff, we, we could have clarified this. Number two. Jeff also suggested that the town. Consider cutting ties with Mills River Fire and Rescue. And form another fire department to serve only the town. That's not a very smart idea for a lot of reasons. So let's look at worst case scenario for just a minute. If you had a town council. That was dumb enough to follow through with that and cut ties with Mills River Fire and Rescue. What would that mean to you as a resident or property owner in the town of Mills River? One thing that it would mean is that you would have a fire department with a class nine ISO rating. Rather than the class three that we have, and you've already heard about that. So what does that mean? It means that you would be paying about three to four times more on your insurance premiums than what you're paying now. If you folks want to keep us and you think that we've done a good job. And you want to prevent this from happening. You better let your voices be heard, especially at election time. Number three. Sandra stated that there is no liaison between the town and the fire department. Again, this is totally false. Since day one, the fire chief has always been the liaison to the town. Furthermore, every single time that I have ever been asked to be here for any reason. I've always been here. Always. Town staff can attest to this. So where did that comment come from? I have no idea. Number four. Sandra also stated that we, that we need to work to build bridges between the town and the fire department. Folks, I'm here tonight to let you know that the town and the fire department have a great relationship. We work together on projects and events all the time. I think that everyone on staff would concur with this. Again, where did this comment come from? Because it's totally false. Number five. Sandra stated that the fire department had not provided information back to the town regarding ARPA funding. Which was awarded to the fire department by our previous town council. Once again, totally false. These records were provided to the town as requested. I think that Sue verified that this did happen. Again, while our comments like this made. By folks who know nothing about the fire department. I'll conclude this part of my presentation by providing some information that is very interesting. And very disturbing. On Friday, April fourteenth, two weeks ago. Sandra called me and asked if she, Jeff and Daniel, our town manager. Could meet with my board of directors and I at town hall in a private secretive meeting. I say secretive because the other three council members knew nothing about this meeting. My board of directors met and decided unanimously. That there would be no meeting unless all five council members were present. That's all I'm gonna say about this, but again, I believe in being transparent. And I think that everyone in Mills River deserves to hear the truth about this. So. During the visiting session, it was very apparent. That we need to have a little. Fire Department one oh one class. And that's what I'd like to do now. Uh, if you look at the organizational structure of Mills River Fire Department. And this is pretty much consistent with. All fire departments in this area, unless it's a municipal, municipal department such as Asheville or Hendersonville. But this is what you'll see pretty much, uh, everywhere. At the top of the totem pole. Ultimately in charge of everything is our board of directors. There are nine of those. Uh, elected by our membership. I'm not a board member. I don't vote. I'm only an advisor to the board. Six of those board members are successful business owners. The other three are employed as managers within successful businesses. In a nutshell, they all know how to manage a dollar. And I can assure you that they and I are committed to wise spending. And keeping your tax rate as low as possible. We all pay taxes just like all of you do. Talk just a minute about staffing. We're very unique and very blessed and very fortunate to have a strong core of volunteers. Uh, we have fifty. Uh, we only have five full-time paid firefighters. And we have ten part-time firefighters, uh, who augment that, uh. That staffing. Uh. I, I just, I just wanna, it's already been mentioned earlier, but. It's not an easy thing to be a volunteer firefighter. A lot is required of these guys and gals and. Uh, I just want to thank them for all that they do and I hope you'll do the same. Uh, what's required of a firefighter? If you get your level two certification. And your EMT certification, which all of my paid staff is required to have all of that. Uh, you're looking at thousands of hours of training. And schooling and certifications and in-service monthly in-service, uh. Classes, that kind of thing. If a volunteer wants to go to evening classes or nighttime classes to receive this. It could take up to a couple of years for them to attain, uh, what they need to be. A certified firefighter or an EMT. Let's talk about the demographics of the Mills River Fire District. Approximately seventy-five percent, excuse me. Is inside the town and approximately twenty-five percent is outside the town, but within Henderson County. Primarily upper north, upper south Pennsylvania road, those areas. Uh, makes up that twenty-five percent. Uh, there's twenty-two point eight one square miles inside the town. There's fourteen point seven eight, uh, square miles outside the town. Uh, there are twenty-nine point seven square miles in the Pisgah National Forest that lies within Henderson County. We, we protect, even though that's federal national forest property, we protect that. In regards to fire and rescue, uh, service. Uh, population inside the town is approximately seventy-five hundred and outside the town is approximately fifteen hundred. We will respond to. Approximately sixteen hundred emergency responses, uh, during this calendar year. Approximately sixty-five percent of those will be medical calls in which we assist Henderson County EMS. The other thirty-five percent are fires, wrecks, search missions, water rescues, public works, issues. Clearing trees, uh, from the roadway, rock slides, that kind of thing. A question that I get a lot is what can an EMT do? What are they trained to do? Uh, trained and qualified to do. And in addition, all the first aid measures that you might imagine with an EMT. A few of the other things that, that we do are to shock or defibrillate a patient that's in cardiac arrest. We can put a, uh. A tube down in their airway to ventilate them or, or breathe, uh, breathe for them. Uh, patient that, uh, is in anaphylactic shock, usually from bee stings. Uh, we can give shots to, uh, counteract, uh, that allergic reaction. Uh, it's just some of the things, and it's not everything, but that just gives you some idea. Uh, what those folks can do. Uh. Something that often goes overlooked or. We fail to mention in some cases is fire education and prevention. We have a very strong, one of the best in the state, uh, fire education and prevention programs. That's headed up by Jeannie Moore. Uh, she goes, uh, she coordinates all of this for us. We assist her as needed. But these programs are all over their schools, our churches, uh, anywhere that we're requested to go. Not only in our fire district, but, um. From time to time throughout pretty much all of western North Carolina. And Jeannie recently received an award, uh, recognizing her as the best in the state. Uh, best fire educator in the state. So obviously that's great. Uh. Mutual aid. Chief Huggins, uh, alluded to this earlier. But no fire department, including us, could do what we do without assistance from other fire department. And I often get this question if, if, and I hope, obviously I hope it doesn't happen, but if your house catches on fire. You're gonna see five or six other fire departments there in addition to Mills River Fire Department. That's the way it works. Uh. Uh, Mr. Young with OSFM, he can. Uh, explain this in detail to you if you're, if you want to learn more about it, but. We are mandated by his office that we have to have a certain. Number of apparatus, a certain number of gallons of water, a certain number of firefighters, all that stuff. You, we have to do that to maintain our, our rating. We were accused one time by a former council member of overreacting. Because he felt like we were sending too many apparatus and too many firefighters. Well, that, that's just ignorance because that's, that's not the way it works. Uh, it's handed down to us. In a lot of cases, how we have to do things. It's not up to us. So let's look just one second at the costs of fire apparatus, fire trucks and fire service equipment. A fire engine, and this is not a fancy one. This is a, a, a typical, uh, basic. Fire engine pumper, if you want to call it that, three quarters of a million dollars. Uh. You. It, it, it sounds ridiculous, but it, it's. That's just the way it is. A ladder truck, you're looking at one point five million. So again, I have gotten questions over the years about. Why in the Sam Hill does Mills River Fire Department need a ladder truck? Well, again, and I'll defer to, to Mr. Young with OSFM. But you know, that's not up to us. Uh, due to the growth in Mills River, and I'm not opposed to the growth in Mills River, so don't. That's not the case at all, but as Mills River grows, we have to go with it. And when we get so many, uh, large buildings and a certain height of buildings. OSFM tells us if you want to maintain your rating, you gotta buy, for instance, a ladder truck. So that's the way that works. It's not, you, me personally, I wish we didn't have a dang ladder truck because it's a pain in my butt. It costs a lot of money to maintain a ladder truck. Uh, maintenance costs are horrendous. And it's just not a simple cheap thing, but again, we had to do it. So just wanted to point that out. Uh. Turnout gear, the structural clothing that firefighters wear. Forty-five hundred dollars to suit up one firefighter, forty-five hundred dollars. And the self-contained, self-contained breathing apparatus, SCBA. That a firefighter wears ten thousand dollars for one firefighter. So that's fourteen thousand. So that's fourteen thousand five hundred dollars for one single firefighter, just, just for that. So the budget process, how does that work in Henderson County? We have a fire and rescue advisory committee, uh, those, the members of that committee are appointed by our county commissioners. And the Fire and Rescue, uh, Association in the county, uh, gets to appoint, I think it's three, I'm not sure, but I believe it's three. But it's made up of representatives, uh, appointed by both, uh, both groups, the commissioners uh, and the Fire Rescue Association, but, but we will be, uh, Joe and I will be going in front of that frac committee, uh, in early May, first week of May. And we will present our proposed budget to them. They will ask a thousand questions as they should. And we will, in a nutshell, we'll have to justify what we're asking for, which is the way it should be. And then the frac committee will present a recommendation to the Henderson County Commissioners based on their findings during the, during their meeting with us. But that's how the, the process works. And then from time to time, the county commissioners, uh, when it's passed on to them, they too will ask us to come before them and, you know, answer questions. But i- it's not a, it's not something where you just get your budget rubber stamped and it's a done deal. It doesn't work like that. And, and it understandably so. It's the way it should be. Our financial records are always open to anyone who would like to see them. Anybody in the Mills River community that wants a copy of our budget, call me, I'll bring it to you. You can come get it. We have nothing to hide. Uh, and we're happy to, happy to share that with you. Inquiries. And, and I just wanna request this of council. If, if you have folks who are asking questions about the fire department or they don't understand why we do something that we do, please, please suggest that that citizen call me or anyone on my board of directors, have them call us so we can sit down and explain things and, you know, don't let things fester, I guess, is the best way to, to, to put that. But, you know, we wanna answer everyone's questions and, you know, we're accountable to everybody that lives in Mills River. And, I mean, that's just the way it is and it's the way it should be. I don't, I don't have our proposed budget on a slide, but I think all of council has these already. But just in case you don't. This is the budget that Joe and I will be presenting to the frac committee in early May. Is there anyone in the room that would like to have a copy of our proposed budget? If so, you're more than welcome, you're more than welcome to have one. Okay. If you decide you want one later, let me know. I'll be happy to, happy to provide it. So, Mr. Mayor, I, I don't know how you want me to do this. If you want me to go through every line item individually, I will be happy to. If you want me to just hit the highlights and answer questions, I can do that. That's entirely up to y'all.
Yeah, I mean, I've looked this over and seen them before, you know, for many years. I would say it would be up to you to highlight it, and if any council member has a question, let you answer that.
One, one thing, if you look there under expenses at our main station, as you know, we're gonna be moving into our new main station, uh, June the third. We'll talk about that more here in a minute. But, uh, uh, this is my best guess. Obviously, we haven't moved in. I don't know exactly what everything is gonna cost there. But I have spoken to fire chiefs who have comparable sized fire stations, uh, to our new one. And honestly, that's what I based these figures on. But those may, you may see a little bit different figures next year this time. Basically did the best I could with the information that I have to work with. Our, our substations, station two, three and four, uh, those are, those are solid. Uh, you know, we've had those stations for a few years and, uh, we can nail that down almost to the penny. Uh, the second page, pretty much self-explanatory, uh, our, our, under program expenses, I, I would just point out that our E M T or medical, uh, line item, that may be a little low. Uh, Mills River is not immune to the drug problem that the rest of our country is dealing with. We go through Narcan, like, I mean, you have no idea. And Narcan is not cheap. But that, that figure may be a little low, uh, personal gear, that's a little bit misleading. That's not really personal, personal gear, but it's dress uniforms, uh, that kind of thing that our firefighters wear. Uh, that, that's what that consists of. Uh, our truck maintenance, uh, obviously, the older the trucks get and the more we run them, the higher those expenses are gonna be. So you see some, some pretty big variations there, uh, based on that, based on that fact. If, if you have any questions about our budget, most of my board of directors is here with me tonight. Uh, I or they, whoever you wanna ask a question, uh, we'll, you will do the best that we can to, to try to answer any, any questions that you may have.
Anyone got any questions?
I've got several questions. I'm not sure if they go along in the budget here or not because I'm not into setting the fire department budget. You want me to start?
Yeah, he's here to answer questions.
That's what I'm glad for. As far as me asking you for a meeting, Mr. Livingston, um, I believe that you had already had a meeting with one council member and you asked if I would like to have a, if y'all could meet with me, and I never heard from you. So I called and asked if a council member would go, because we can only have two together at a time without advertising a meeting and it going out on Zoom. And I don't mind it going out on Zoom because I have nothing to hide. And I asked Daniel Cobb if he would come and be there so that we could talk amongst ourselves. And it didn't necessarily have to go out in public. There's nothing to hide, nothing secretive. And I don't appreciate the implication that there was. Um, the que- questions I had about the budget. Now, when we had, we were, had our first visioning last year for budget. And when we asked about the fire department budget, we were told that the town had never received one.
That is absolutely not true.
Were we told that?
Yes. Jim says yes.
Okay. Did y'all not hear it?
Well, I know the budget presented had it in. I will say that, that we
But when we were sitting and visioning and we asked, have we had a budget? We were told, I believe Daniel said that he had not received one since he had been here. Is that correct, Daniel?
I think at that, at that time of that budget being presented, I don't think we had received that year's budget. But we had, we had, we had received prior year budgets up to that point. I just don't know that I had that one in hand at the time last year we met for visioning. I just don't recall what date we got the budget from the department.
And the timing of visioning would make it almost impossible for them to have had this coming year's budget in hand.
But they would have had one from the past that we could have at least looked at to have some kind of reference as to what we were doing.
Right.
So do you understand why that question was asked?
I, I can't, I'm not gonna stand here and, and lie and tell you about the timing that you got it. I, I'm not sure about that. But I will swear under oath that every single year since this town was incorporated, at this time of the year, at budget time, all that information has been given to the town of Mills River.
Well, I'm not doubting you. I'm just saying we were not provided with it.
Well, don't, you, I'm not guilty of that.
Well, neither am I.
All I know is that the fire department provided it to the town manager. Now, what happened beyond that, I have no idea.
Okay. Well, my next one here is the liaison. And you said that you're the captain, you're the liaison.
No, ma'am, I'm the fire chief.
Well, the fire chief, I'm sorry. But this is the best action I've seen for a liaison that I've seen yet. I've not seen one come from the fire department. I got the contract, I looked at it and I read it, and it said, we're supposed to have a liaison. I said, oh, well, that would be nice if we had information. We just started last year. So we're getting in and getting our feet wet. Now, I've always had nothing but respect and admiration for the fire department. Because when I need you, I need you now. When my family has needed you, they needed you now, and you have always been there.
And we will continue to do so.
There's nothing but respect. My family's been in the fire department. My family's been in law enforcement. So there's no disrespect coming from my house. And the ARPA funding, I ask it several meetings, have we got them a check yet? Have we got them a check yet? Waiting to get the funding in so we could get you the check. Now, as with other agencies we have here that we provide ARPA funding to, they are held accountable as to how they spend it. Because ultimately, it can come back on council. So we're just trying to be good stewards of the money that we deal with and that we hand out. We're not singling the fire department out.
And I would just say that Sue told me what the town needed. And I provided that to Sue.
Okay. And we did get that at one of our meetings. It came out in our packet, wasn't it?
I, I think we sent that information after that question came up of visioning.
Okay. So we did get it though. And I appreciate that because like I say, ultimately, we have to be good stewards of the money, just like y'all do, and you do a fine job. Then we would get down to conversations that me and you've had. Now, I believe there was a time when y'all were wanting a digital sign. And me and you had conversations. And I told you that with the ordinance that we had, that I was not interested in changing that ordinance because I like it the way it sits. But I do support the fire department having a sign. You don't have to sell me on the sign. I understand it. And when the vote went and you got the sign, I was glad you got the sign. But my vote was not against the fire department. My vote was for the town of Mills River because I am not interested in seeing Mills River lit up. That would change our rule setting, and I believe it goes against what we want. But I am for the fire department having a sign, and you know that because me and you had several conversations on it. Do you remember those?
Yes, ma'am, I do. But I believe in the vote, it was a three-two vote, and you voted against it.
It was to not change the ordinance, not to keep the fire department from getting a sign. I had no interest in lighting up Mills River. And they did say that it was a gray area, and if we did it, then we could be exposed to having lawsuits come in and having other digital signs go up. And then there comes the time when I learned that y'all have decided to label me as a puppet. And I did not appreciate that one bit. I found that very disrespectful and totally unbased. And then when I asked you about it, you said, oh, that wasn't me, that was the board. And I said, let the board say it. If you think I'm a puppet for anybody sitting in this chair, you are saddlingly mistaken, sir.
All right. I think maybe this is getting slightly out of hand for a public meeting.
Well, that's why I wanted to meet with just
This is more private matters as this goes on. I think some of this is uncalled for. What I would like to say here is that since I've been on council for a little over thirteen years, I recommend the way that we have been doing it. Letting the county commissioners set their budget based on their presentation to frac. We'll collect the money and turn it over based on the rate we collect it at. Be it ninety-five to a hundred percent, whatever it falls in. They'll get every penny that we've collected turned over to them. As far as us entering into a separate contract with them or any other, uh, fire department, uh, I'm against. We're in, we've got a contract with them to provide us service to Mills River as one of our services. And I, and for that reason, I would hope that all the council would follow on. And if you'll remember, I told you in visioning, if we went there, it would just draw, it would just put wedges amongst friends, and that's where it seemed to have gotten hurt. I'm totally against that one hundred percent. So, I don't know, when we go to, I would hope that y'all would elect to leave it the same as we've been doing. I would say that if anybody's got any questions from a county standpoint, I have asked Mr. Lapsley to be here to answer any questions that he might be able to answer. Uh, none of which I think has arose tonight that we didn't already know, but I did have him come just in case. And if we got anything more professional to put into this, uh, we'll, I'd be willing to hear it, but, uh, I don't wanna get any more questions out here.
Well, I have something more, and it's professional. I ran into Rick last weekend, and I told him that with the accident that happened on two eighty, when the truck flipped over, that Mills River should be highly commended on how they handled that. Because that could have been a very dangerous situation. It could have turned deadly at any minute for people coming around. And y'all did a great job. And I've always appreciated y'all. I appreciate Jeannie in the smokehouse. She brought it to schools. She's taught a lot of kids the right things to do and gave them the confidence to do it. And she's even brought it to our work and had us out there in it. So don't never think I don't admire and respect the fire department because I do.
Okay. Got any more questions for Rick, while he's up here? Or Rick, you got more?
I've got just a few announcements, uh, probably everybody in this room knows Joe Fowler. Joe's been with us fifty-three, fifty-four years. And he recently announced that he's retiring end of June. Most, almost all of his years with the fire department are as a volunteer. And I just wanna say publicly on behalf of Mills River Fire Department that we very much appreciate all of his contributions. And I hope that everyone in the Mills River community will say thanks. Uh, we will have, uh, a little event for him that he doesn't know about. If, if you'll see me privately, I, I'll give you the details.
As long as you're not standing by Joe, right?
Right, right. Uh, Mills River Day, that's a town event, uh, that we're helping out with. That's Saturday, May the sixth, from eleven to five at North Rivers Farm. Uh, that'll be a great, great thing. Uh, everybody try to come. The fire department flower sale that we do every The fire department flower sale that we do every year, uh, thanks to Van Wiggertons, uh, that will be Saturday, May the thirteenth, from eight until three, at our current station, our old station, Old School House Road. The grand opening and dedication of our new, uh, main fire station, which every single person is invited to, please be there. But that's Saturday, June the third, noon until four P M. We'll feed everybody from noon until two and give you a tour of the station. And then, starting at two, we'll have a little dedication ceremony and raising the flags. But please try to join us for that. This is, this is for the Mills River community, not, not for me, or not for us. In, in closing, I would just say this. I thank all five of y'all for what you do for the town of Mills River. I understand, I've been on the Henderson County Planning Board for twenty years. And it's a thankless job. You get a lot of criticism, just like the five of you do. And I, I can relate, but on behalf of the fire department, I just want to say thanks. You know, we may not always see eye to eye, but we can still be friends and work things out. And along those lines, I hope Randy doesn't mind me sharing this little story, but I've known Randy for years, and there's been a couple of issues over the years where Randy and I haven't seen eye to eye. And on every single one of those occasions, he and I have gotten together and we've been able to talk. And I've learned from Randy, and I think Randy's learned some from me. And we've al, we've always been able to find some common ground and walk away friends. And that's the way, at least in Rick's opinion, that's the way things should be done. I, I just wanted to, to throw that out there. The Mills River Town Council has plenty of issues that you need to be working on. And Mills River Fire and Rescue has plenty of issues that we need to be working on. Neither organization has time to be dealing with this kind of foolishness. That's just my opinion. You, if y'all would just concentrate on your jobs and let us concentrate on our jobs, everything will be, will be great. Again, I've got a tremendously strong board of directors. You, we don't need council micromanaging the fire department. We've got it under control. I think we've done a good job and we will continue to strive to do a good job. And please understand that the fire department would love to have the same good friendly relationship with the town that we've always had, including with council members. We've always had this good relationship up until very recently. And I can assure you that we will do our part as a fire department to restore it. If, if we can just, if we're willing to work together and we can do things the right way, you, this will work. My office door is always open, as it always has been. And my phone, unfortunately, is always on. But thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor Gauntz.
Yes.
I did have questions about this, uh, proposed budget.
Okay.
And, um, I guess in disclosure, I did meet with the chief and two board members at the end of March. I went to the main station and, uh, basically to get educated. And it predated the submission of this budget, it dealt with other matters. But, uh, since then, we've got a proposed budget. And obviously, being the rookie on this council and needing the most education, uh, and I typically have the most questions as well. And I would, I had hoped that we were going to meet the, the April fourteen meeting that the chief referred to. Uh, that was, you know, to not take time with these people and this full council that's already versed on these matters. Uh, that was my hope, to try to get some of these things answered beforehand, since they may not be germane to this entire council. But, uh, that obviously didn't occur, so I don't know. And again, I don't want to take everybody's time, for the same reason I was hoping for a meeting beforehand. But I still have questions, so I.
Is it just an handful of questions or so?
Yes, I mean, it is pretty much, uh, so that general housekeeping things, just, and basically to educate me.
Well, I think, I think he'd be more willing to answer your question.
Sure, sure.
Okay. Uh, so on your cover letter that accompanied your proposed budget, you indicated that you're projecting a two hundred ninety thousand dollar, uh, increase to cover additional firefighters and another fire apparatus, replacing a tanker.
Yes.
And so I noticed, uh, on a previous budget, your payroll was five hundred eighty thousand, it's going to seven fifty, and that's the hundred and seventy for those three positions. And at our meeting in the end of March, you did tell me ballpark about what it costs to bring on a full-time professional firefighter. So, uh, my question to you, Chief Livingston, is that that left basically a hundred twenty thousand dollars a year for this four-year. Is that for the fire apparatus, or you're telling me it's a half million dollars? Or is it more of the three-quarter or one billion? Is it something that the fire department or the board finances, or you have cash reserves and?
Okay, so, let me back up for a second. We're requesting that our tax rate be cut from eleven cents to ten cents because of the revaluation process. Okay, so in cutting it one cent, we will still see, if it's approved, we will still see a revenue increase of three hundred thousand dollars roughly, give or take a few dollars. Okay, so the county commissioners ask that we give them a plan that, or a budget that's good for four years. It's hard to project four years out in the fire service, because, you know, we don't know what growth in Mills River is going to do and so on and so forth. But today, at this point in time, I don't need to add a paid firefighter per shift, there's three shifts. But within, before the, before the end of this four-year period, the, the county commissioner's request, before that four years is up, I'm fairly certain that we, in fact, I'm ninety-nine percent sure that we will have to add three firefighters, one per shift. So the, the cost of, and this is going up, up, up almost every day, but right now, today, the figure that most fire chiefs use for a firefighter is seventy thousand dollars. Now, that's not salary, that's salary plus benefits, plus uniforms, plus turnout gear, all the stuff, you know, I mentioned earlier. But we use a figure of seventy thousand dollars per firefighter. So obviously, that's two hundred and ten thousand dollars, all of that three hundred thousand additional. Okay, so that's two-ten accounted for. We have a tanker that's thirty-five years old, it's worn out, it's costing us a ton of money to maintain it, and it, it's got to be replaced. And we're working on that currently. I can't give you a firm price, because we don't have that back end yet. But we're probably looking at six hundred thousand dollars, which obviously we can't pay for that. I mean, we're going to have to finance it. And the, the annual payment for that tanker is the reason for that other ninety thousand dollars. So you got two-ten for personnel, uh, three additional firefighters, plus the remainder to replace a tanker. Did, did that answer?
That, that did. I guess along that same line, I was looking at the budget and, uh, your, um, your projected gross income was two-point-six and your projected expenses were two-point-two or eight. But anyway, it left you net proceeds of like three hundred something thousand dollars. And I don't know what, if that's typically how you budget and do you designate that? If you do end up with net proceeds, that go in the capital reserve, or what happens to the three hundred thousand, because?
But if, if there's any extra, it'll go on the principal, uh, for our loan for the new station.
Okay, uh, then, again, I apologize, and Mayor, you cut me off. Uh, so in previous budgets, you always have like a main station line item, and it's always a big figure, like five hundred thousand, three hundred thousand, three hundred seventy-five. And, uh, is that for expansions you've done, the current main station? Or is that in preparation for what's going on on Boston Howard?
Yes, sir, that was money that we were setting back to try to have a decent down payment on our new main station. And try, in, instead of trying to finance the entire cost, we were trying to have a little bit upfront to put as a down payment.
Okay, and then, because then you have the, the line item of, uh, principal and interest, and so that's going against the new construction.
Yes, sir.
Cost and, uh.
The, to, to, to expand on that just a little bit, we have one apparatus, our, our frontline first-out engine. We have not paid that off yet. So that cost plus, uh, the annual payment for our new station, those two items make up that, that figure there.
All right, um. And this is kind of getting into the weeds, but like on station two, which is, is that the prior station?
Yes, sir.
The maintenance, there's a big jump in maintenance, and I was wondering, you were telling me that, or you said earlier that everything's kind of thick, or you knew what was coming down the road, but then I see you, you're projecting a big.
I appreciate you asking. On the south end of that building toward Marlowe School, we've got a, a leak problem. Uh, doesn't happen all the time, but when the wind's blowing this right and rain's going against the building, we've got a leak problem. It's going to be a costly fix, but we've got to fix it. Uh, we're, we're working on that now, but that additional is, and again, that's kind of a semi-educated guess as to what that's going to cost us. But that's the reason for that, that higher figure.
Okay. Thank you very much, Chief Livingston.
Okay, yeah, okay. Anything else before we move on? Okay, here none. What I'd like to do is take just a short break before we go into the regular agenda. Give the firefighters a chance to move on if they want to, and maybe hopefully not have to do anything tonight. It is raining, but, but we thank everybody for coming out. Anybody feel free to leave, that wants to leave, anybody wants to stay, why don't stay? So, start off with a regular agenda, somebody will lead us in, aid the ARPA nonprofit fund.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, this item is in reference to, it's a follow-up conversation to the meeting we had last month, excuse me, earlier this month, regarding nonprofit requests for, um, American Rescue Plan funding. Just as a quick reminder for those watching and listening, that the town has earmarked a hundred thousand dollars of its, of its ARPA funds for nonprofit capital project support. Um, so we met, uh, we had a committee that met the first week of the month, and then we presented those findings at your last meeting. And following that meeting, I provided written follow-up to each of the applicants, um, from the committee's comments, as well as those that came up during that council meeting. So, uh, I've, I've been, I've asked all those folks to come back tonight to provide, uh, any additional information they'd like to. So if it works for the board, I think I'll just run down the list and start with, um, the community center, is there anyone here to speak on behalf of the community center's application? Did not hear back from Mr. Britton, so I assume that we'll get that information in writing. Okay, uh, Blue Ridge Literacy Council, Katrina, just up for the podium, please.
Interesting connection now, but.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'll get used to that at some point.
Takes a while to learn all that. Hi. How do you want me to present overview?
If you would just summarize the comments I gave, I don't have them in front of me.
Okay, oh, okay, I didn't really print them all, but that's fine. Well, we were requesting fifteen thousand dollars as a capital funds. Um, one of the programs that we are working on bringing here, um, is workplace English and literacy, uh, to some of the, uh, manufacturers, agricultural. Uh, we just piloted this program in Hendersonville at Littman Farms, where we did workplace English, um, for some of the Spanish workers who wanted to improve their English. Um, we came in and what we discovered was we don't have the equipment necessary to really fully engage in that program. It was a successful program, we did what we could with it, but we could do a better job if we had capital funds that provided us with laptops and tablets. Um, all pre and post-testing is done using technology. And we also discovered that while we are trying to help folks with their English language acquisition, uh, their digital skills are very low also. And we also find that you do not get paid as much when you don't have digital skills. And so they would like to learn Excel, and so the library has a program that, um, you can get certifications in Excel. And what we would like to do is provide that programming, um, and have one of our tutor translators help, um, while they're taking that class online. Uh, we would have a tutor translator there to help, um, any, any issues that they might have. Again, we would need to have some traveling computers with us, laptops, so we could pop those up, whether it's at an employer's or at one of the public facilities, let's say in Mills River, in the library here, for instance. And so our request was asked, um, computers run right now? You know, we could probably get them, um, possibly refurbished, but I hate doing that because they get, um, aged out. So the question asked was how much, um, would a laptop? Right now, an estimate for a laptop, and they've gone up too with inflation quite a bit, um, is about eight hundred and thirty-nine dollars, um, for a ThinkPad. And what that does for us is just give us the power to, uh, do the testing mostly and then run the classes. So it just needs that, um, I don't know, video and technology capability and to run some spreadsheets at the same time. Um, we were also asking for tablets. Tablets are also something that is of the future. A lot of companies are, um, asking their employees to learn how to use them, especially in presentations and things like that, whiteboards. We use them for our teens even, when they're doing homework club. The tutors are asking us, do you have an iPad where we can stream it onto an Apple TV? I'm like, no, we have paper and pencil. So we're trying to also get into the technical age. So iPads right now are running about three ninety-seven, um, to four hundred and fifty dollars. Uh, and so we had asked for some iPads in that, um, in that budget. Let's see, um, and we can provide that in a, you know, in a paper form, if that's what the committee or the council needs. And this is just based on doing some research. He also asked about information regarding literacy councils or literacy connections funding. Does it receive funding from other public agencies and private donations? Absolutely, we're, I mean, we're funded in a variety of different ways. We're funded by grants that we request in the community. Um, oftentimes, grants don't necessarily cover technical or capital items, they, they do more programming. Um, we do receive funding from the county, Henderson County, and then we receive funding from the city of Hendersonville, we have a request into them. Um, we have one request into a grant through the Community Foundation of Henderson County, um, for this also to supplement what we've asked here. Um, so we've asked them for fifteen thousand dollars also, so that we could double what we're asking for. Um, as we are planning to run two to three simultaneously, we have the tutors in place, we have everything in place, we just need the technology. So we've not heard yet from them. Uh, some churches also, um, provide us with funding, uh, many times for curriculum needs that we get. And then we have, um, private donations, yes, individuals like yourselves, we have fundraisers, we have a lunch on June eighth. Like for that, and, uh, that's how we receive our funding.
Any, uh, employers or factory or anybody like that, donating to y'all's cause?
Yes.
Okay.
Mm-hmm, yeah, we have some of our manufacturers. And, um, when we do come in to provide that service for tutoring, we often, um, it'll be a fee for service. So they often will pay us to come in and do that. In a sense, it's either a sponsorship or just a fee for service, but it's supporting the organization at a low cost.
Have you received any ARPA money from any other source?
We have not received any ARPA funding from any other source, no.
Do you find that the residents, when they get the equipment stuff, they tend to take care of it?
So at this point, we've not necessarily considering loaning the equipment out. Um, what we will be doing is traveling with the equipment to provide the classes and to provide the testing with the equipment, so that we have the appropriate equip, equipment, and we're not relying on the facility to provide us with it. So at this point now, we would not be loaning the equipment that you're suggesting out. Perhaps maybe the iPads, um, and we'd have a process and a policy where we would have people sign up for them. But that might be in the future.
Anything else?
Okay, okay, hey, thanks again.
Thank you, Katrina. Next on our list, we have, excuse me, the Mills River Partnership, Maria, she'll come to the podium, please give me just one second to pull up your presentation. Next on our list, we have, excuse me, the Mills River Partnership, Maria, she'll come to the podium. Please give me just one second to pull up your presentation.
I'll go ahead. So I'm Maria Wise with Mills River Partnership. And um I'll address the questions pretty much directly that the committee had. I won't go too deeply into history of the partnership and details of our projects, but if you have any questions about that broader at the end, feel free to ask me. Um. So the I will frame it a little bit, the thinking behind this ask that makes it a little different from the work that the partnership has done in the past um is that we've always kind of been bound by the watershed boundaries geographically because we're watershed protection group and we receive funding that is really to protect that drinking water source of the Mills River. So we work in the lands that are the drainage areas of the Mills River. So you know, a big portion of the town of Mills River, of course, we do work in. And most of our projects, you'll see a project map in a minute, and um most of our projects have been within the town, a few outside. But we have not been able to address all the needs of the town of Mills River because so much of the town now exists outside that watershed. So you'll see kind of there, the light purple lavender, that's the Mills River watershed. And then that overlay is in the red border is the town. And uh we have worked in that whole area. They are kind of in the middle, which is the watershed. Those are all current project sites. And you'll see, you know, just a few of those extend out into the greater watershed. A lot are within the town limits. And those are agricultural B and P projects, um some stream restoration work, a lot of log jam work, especially recently log jam and debris removal and education and outreach. So now on this this one slide, you'll see four additional sites. They're kind of the upper middle over toward the airport and then lower um southern Boilston Creek area and the French Broad. And um the most of those are shovel ready or, you know, the these are from landowners, property owners who have reached out to us directly with needs. And in the past, I've had to say, I'm sorry, um. We actually are bound to work within the watershed, and we just don't have the ability to expand to the whole town. But we hope to move into that um greater area soon. So these funds that we're asking for would allow us to really address the needs of the whole town of Mills River. So Boilston Creek, for instance, um two property owners have contacted me in the last couple of months with flooding and erosion issues due to a big log jam. And um so that's one that's extremely shovel ready. We could, you know, act on that very quickly and take care of that problem. I spoke to one of the landowners today by email, and she said that for for her, the the flooding has kind of gone away because the the debris of has pushed the um, you know, the the channel outside has caused so much erosion. So she's losing land um really every day with that log jam. And that's not the only log jam, I'm sure, on Boilston Creek. And once we put the word out to the community that we can assist with that, um, I'm sure we'll have more calls. And with those log jam removals, you know, it takes large equipment and um sensitive to the the riverbanks. We have to, you know, repair the riverbanks and plant grass and trees back so it doesn't wash away again. And um so it can get each jam can get a little pricey. Um, some of the other projects up there that have been addressed is the need for agricultural chemical handling facility at the Horticultural Research Station. That would be one where we would partner with cooperative extension and they would pay for most of that. Um, so you know, we would use your funds, hopefully, to match with other larger funding sources to get some of these larger projects done. And that just shows that's one of the biggest log jams we ever cleared, and we hope to get ahead of those problems so that, you know, they're smaller, don't cause as much damage and aren't nearly as expensive to clear. And you had questions about our outreach and education and workshops. We do um many workshops a year, shade your stream workshops, stream bank stabilization workshops, uh, live state volunteer days that always have an educational element, um invasive uh plant invasive plant removal workshops, river cleanups, after school clubs and kids in the creek. I have kind of a breakdown of the things that target adults versus the things that target children. Um, the shade your stream workshops draw about forty five people per class and um stream bank stabilization workshop is once a year with about forty people, um, et cetera. Then the education with kids, just last week here, we assisted the soil and water conservation district and um did education with kids in the creek, various elementary schools, mainly rugby middle, but some others now. And that's like four hundred kids all in one week. Um, so and we do lots of other outreach activities and festivals like at North River Farms with Mills River Day. Uh, we'll be a major sponsor of that event. And so, you know, we're looking at over a thousand kids reached per year, and we would continue all those programs and add a couple more as we branch out.
Can I ask a question? Can you go back to that slide?
I guess.
So that's on the side of North Mill River Road.
It is.
That's that restoration project. So is that held up? That's been there and is visible for everybody driving by. So is that held up? Your expectations uh so far?
It has uh really exceeded expectations, really. Um, there has been very little need for repair on any of that stretch, and that was even during some major flooding when it was first went in. So that was kind of the, you know, the the project to really prove it's it's working.
Yeah, I thought I knew the answer to that question, but I wanted to ask.
It is a visible one, too.
So a question I had, and it probably answered it. Y'all do go back and revisit the restoration to make sure that they're holding up and all. Is there like an annual visit or a site visit after each flood episode or?
It it turns out, you know, we're kind of hands on with our projects. Um, we we really visit them often, especially after they've first gone in, because that's when you're most likely to see problems occur. So we check on them often, and if we see something, you know, we we plant more plants, whatever's needed to to stabilize them.
Any other question?
I had one more.
Yes.
Have y'all received any ARPA funds from any other source?
We have not.
Okay.
I'd like to say thank you for all the work you've done in Mills River and down here through the park and by the water department. I see it come up on news clips and stuff, and it is a really good thing.
Yeah, thank you. Great partner to work with. Really, we were we partnered with you. You were the main partner.
Anybody got anything else for us? Nope. Okay, well, thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you, Maria. Is there anyone here from Mount Gilead Church? You're up, ma'am.
Hi, my name's Donna Waters, and I'm the treasurer of Mount Gilead Baptist Church. Um. We've got a a small congregation that was very much impacted by COVID because we did shut down just like we were asked to. Um. We've got a lot of families in our church, many of them low income and not able to have a swing set in their backyard, or they live in apartments where they don't have play equipment. And we thought that something that we could really do would be to build a playground at our church because we've got the land to put it on and people were willing to donate money. Uh, we'd raised about four thousand dollars when we found out about this um funds available from the COVID recovery. And uh had never any of us in our church applied for a grant, so we were starting from scratch. I attended a meeting that Mr. Cobb had for preparations and listened and took a lot of notes and I figured with four thousand dollars, maybe we could ask for four or five thousand dollars to help us put it all together and we are a congregationally led church, and because of that, we had to hold a vote. Well, unfortunately, when we held the vote at the business meeting the Sunday immediately after that meeting, um they said, oh, free money and asked me to request twenty thousand dollars to fund this playground. Unfortunately, that listening to the small amounts that other people are asking for was their Santa Claus wish list, to be honest with you. When Mr. Cobb sent me my email that I I thank you for that. Um, the the two points he made that was the reason that our request was turned down was number one, because this was not for commercial playground equipment. And number two was um that if we built a playground, it would have to be open to the community. Unfortunately, um there's there's two things to look at there. Um, you have a commercial playground right by this building and it's open, it's used all daylight hours, seven days a week by whoever comes by, and nobody's checking IDs to make sure they live in Mills River. But um it's also built on land that's owned by Mills River. The playground that we would be building is on private property. And it's with our church. Um. Because it's on private property, we have insurance that we have to pay. And we had, before we ever started raising money even, had contacted both the state about what the state required for us to do and our insurance company. And of course, the first thing the insurance company says is you've got to limit the access to either members of your church or friends of members of the church or families there. And and we had decided that the state said we had to put up a five foot tall commercial grade chain link fence and keep access restricted. And then we had to have four inches of some kind of a soft mulch which has been in place now for a long, long time. And so we get looking at it, and it the expense was going up and up with it and we started looking, I I I have not told the congregation, I told the pastor. But um what what we were looking at is we would only be using that playground equipment on Sundays when we had vacation Bible school. There might be some of the families that need play equipment because they've got three or four kids. And they would feel safer bringing them to the church than to bring them in a big open area, especially we've got a lot of very young children. We've got quite a few under the age of five. And it would be a safe place for them to come. Now, our church is probably eighty percent Mills River res residents, so it would be benefiting residents of Mills River, but we're just not allowed to buy our insurance and just for safety sake to open it to the general public. And because it would only be used short periods of time for small numbers of children, the units that we had submitted that they had found to use actually would be more than sufficient. In fact, we could probably come back and just use one rather than two. Um, we were looking at trying to separate the younger kids from the older kids by having two different units. Um, and there's a precedent for that because I I don't know that there's any brick and mortar uh nonprofits in Mills River that aren't churches. But in Henderson County, there's a Boys and Girls Club. There's a homeless shelter. There's a scout hut for the Boy Scouts. Now, the the city and the county provide funding for them. They get grants and so forth. But they are, there's nobody that would ever think if oh they got a grant for the Boys and Girls Club for a van that anybody in Hendersonville could use the van or that if they gave money to the homeless shelter, that anybody could just walk into the homeless shelter and go look and see what they got. And um so we were kind of surprised to find that as a requirement that was never mentioned in any of this documentation, we would have to open to the general public. Um. I appreciate you hearing me out, and I also understand that, yeah, they were being a little bit over eager and a little bit greedy. But I would like to see if it would be possible. We've now raised six thousand dollars, but if we could get four, that would be wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Water. Um, Linda and Joe Britton, because I'm speaker on the farm market.
All right, um, this is uh to address the questions that came up uh when you reviewed our application. And uh we had asked for two thousand dollars to purchase computer equipment and uh fireproof document boxes, just to refresh your memory on that. So looking at some specific quotes, this is what our market manager has requested for the computers, and she feels confident ordering from the company called Backmarket dot com. She's used them several times before. Uh, it is refurbished equipment, but it every she has purchased from them before and has had no issues with anything she had purchased from them. And these are the ones that she specifically requested. At this point in time, the farmer's market owns a Chromebook that is out of date. There are no more updates that can be done to it. It's it's out of date. And that's our only computer. And uh Tala, our market manager, uses her own personal computer for her market work. But Tala will be leaving us. She's not a permanent fixture at the farmer's market, so that nice computer will go away with her, and we're left with this Chromebook that isn't functional. So we've got to do something about getting some equipment that belongs to the farmer's market that is uh reliable. And uh she asked for a tablet, which we've not had before because at the farmer's market, there is quite a bit of record keeping that has to be done at the very end of the market, and some of it is done through our card swipe machine, but a lot of it is still done paper and pencil on uh a spreadsheet. Well, since we have been able to get a QuickBooks program started for our record keeping, she feels like she might be able to enter some of that data at the market, straight to the QuickBooks, without her having to do this interim step on the paper and pencil ledger. So and there's also times when we've had to do surveys. Uh, for example, we did a um uh double bucks, double up with Mountain Wise last year before we started getting the funding that the the town allotted us. And as part of that, the the uh shoppers needed to answer survey online, and so I'm us having a tablet there would enable us to be able to do these surveys much quicker whenever we need to. Um, we have no place other than a regular storage box to keep our records in that are sensitive like our social security card information and the taxes that we're now having to hold out on employees. And so we've got to have someplace secure to hold that information and um checkbook, banking information and so forth. And at this point in time, some of that information is housed with me because of the parts of the financial that I'm still in charge of, and part of it is with Tala. So that's why we're requesting two. So that's why we're requesting two boxes for that. And this was the prices at the most recent time. And I'm assuming things will be close to that when we can actually order it. As far as other funding sources to help with this, we don't have any funding source to help with this, but we do have other funding sources that help with other parts of the market. We do have fundraisers, we have donors and sponsorships. We participate in a prescription program through ASAP. So we have donations given to us from Party Hospital and Advent Health. So we do have other, and hopefully this year we'll continue that. So we do have those sponsorships that help with other, with other things. And I've handed you also a copy of our master budget for 2023, so that you can see all the funds that we're handling. And I had put in italics, the part that is being supplied by the money that was promised us for operating expenses for 2023 and the ARPA funds that we've already had designated for the double dollars program. So hopefully this will help you see our, our full budget and where that part is fitting in. So is there anything else I can explain to you?
Any other questions?
If you look percentage, like when you swipe the credit card, does it pay some percentage off? Like it's charging you, like the Visa card is charging you a percentage?
The bank, yeah. It's all through, just like any business that runs a credit card. We pay the same fee structure that any other business would.
And that eats up a lot of our money.
Yeah, that's why I've got that on, on here somewhere that's got bank card fees. Last year's bank card fees was $1,270 for us.
They actually charge us for SNAP.
Well, SNAP's a small amount, but you still.
They still charge us every time we swipe somebody's SNAP card. They charge us to swipe their SNAP card.
All right, anything else I can help you with?
I had a question, maybe more for staff, only because I think of it right now. But do we have a process in place or we're going to have to develop one? And just the farm market sort of brought to mind that this council awards them $2,000. And then in the process of weeks or months, they purchase the equipment that they need for them to make like a request for payment and they submit their invoices and then sort of report. And then 90%, you know, and then that's what's actually paid out by the town, not to exceed the $2,000 approved by council. Is there something like that in place or are we going to have to develop that for all these?
We have to develop that. We have, we have it in place for existing nonprofits. For example, with the market when they were submitting invoices last year for the SNAP matching, but we don't have anything, anything specific for the ARPA funds. But so we'll have to develop that.
Okay.
All right, next on our list is STEEP. Are you, is Karen, are you speaking to that?
No, I'm not.
Okay.
Just, we just removed that.
Okay. So then next on our list is Unity. And there are a couple of projects there and I'll hand it over to you, ma'am.
And I don't know if you're going to use my presentation or not. It's up to you. I have it on a flash drive too, if that's easier, Daniel. Well, I'm Karen Eve Bain and thanks again for having us on a very full agenda. And you're faced with an elegant dilemma. And the dilemma is how to make the choices and elegance is that there's a lot of money. And I believe that there's 1.1 million that is not allocated at this point. And 100,000 that, that is allocated for nonprofits. And as you know, this was open to all nonprofits without any exclusion. And specifically, we paid a lot of attention when we wrote our application to something that Mr. Young brought up, which is the intent of the, the ARPA funds. And the intent is advertised is to counteract the effects of the pandemic on public health and economic impacts. So to, to do something economically, put things back into the community and also enhance the well-being of residents. So this is our quick presentation to give you more of an idea because we didn't have a chance to look at the, look at the project. We have done a lot of work on it. And I did share this with the Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee on Tuesday and had a very favorable reception on that. So the Unity, let me first say that it's, it happens to be owned, the property happens to be owned by Unity of the Blue Ridge, but we selected the name Unity because it is a partnership of five nonprofits. So we are working with five other nonprofits to try to bring this to Mills River. We want to have this property, which does not have to be purchased by Mills River, to be available to the 7,300 plus residents and to promote environmental awareness and education, a peaceful place for walking. It's referred to as a passive, passive start to restore well-being. And also a place for larger performances and gatherings for Mills River. One of the questions that was asked is what is Mills River missing out on by not having a larger gathering place? Well, it's one of those things, if you don't have it, then you're not asked to, to host it. And I have two letters from the executive director of the Arts Council that I shared with, in, in the proposal application and then also with Daniel, that if Mills River has a space that could seat more than 100 people, which is about what one of the covered shelters here will seat, that more activities will be brought here by the Arts Council. I've been in discussion with that as the chairman of STEEP about what presentations can we bring here? And an example is that STEEP owns the rights to the story of Colonel William Mills. And Colonel William Mills is the name that Mills River was named for. And it's the entire, you know, background history, it'd be a great event to have Mills River come together to hear the story of, of William Mills, because he's responsible for Mills River, Mills Springs, Mills Gap, et cetera. And we could do that at, at the Unity property. So the first thing we asked for, this was $22,000 to buy chairs and fans and some heaters to put on this existing patio. This patio you can see has about 30 people on it. We can easily seat 250 people. So that would be in a place where you could have a public performance, an event, an activity, gatherings for, for Mills River, open to the public. They are for a very minimal investment because I mean, Unity is saying, we've already built this space. We would, you know, be very happy with a bit of investment to make it open to the public. The second project is to offer public access to about nine acres of a passive park that will then connect to a 10 acre park that now exists. And I'm not sure if I asked last time, but have any of you been to and know about the CMS, the Carolina Memorial Sanctuary Park that is off of Fanning Bridge Road? It's 10 acres. It is a public park. People do not know about it. It does not, it is a cemetery. It does not look like one. It is a green cemetery. There are no tombstones. It is natural. No one would even know that it was a green cemetery. It's one of the only ones that's registered in North Carolina, but that is an open park. So this would be complete free access for the public to come on our campus. It'd be a, or the Unity campus. I say hour because we're working with Conserving Carolina, Carolina Memorial Sanctuary, STEEP, my organization, Confluential Charitable Trust, which Mr. Gallup's here, we're also working with Conserving Carolina. And we're trying to bring all the resources together to make this happen. And we're talking about creating true common ground for Mills River in that sense. And you all are very aware of what the vision is for the town. And in the application, I specified that this meets the town values of responsible growth of new facilities, community preservation of open and wooded land, connectivity and access, inclusivity, inclusive decision-making, health and wellness, partnership at community, community values and community engagements. I mean, those are directly from the, the town plan. And it also meets the comprehensive structure plan, which is land use, community facilities and services, parks and recreation, infrastructure and economic development in the sense that it's highly economic to have, suddenly have a 20 acre park available for the costs that we're talking about. And it meets all of the town vision statements. And this is a, a new concept that we're hoping will be embraced. One of the reasons is that people are already coming to this property walk around on a regular basis because it's beautiful. We already have walkers there. We have emails for people who come and say, thanks for letting this space be available. So we decided, let's make this truly a public facility. And you can see there's a beautiful view there that shows the park at Barkwells. We have support of about a half a dozen businesses who would like to see this there as well. This is so you could see the property. It's off of Old Fanning Bridge Road. The yellow is what Community, Carolina Memorial Sanctuary own. At the bottom of that, where you see McDowell Creek, you can already see there's established trails. That's 10 acres of beautiful trails. There is a pond and a creek there that there's been restoration on through Car-, Conserving Carolina, et cetera. Unity of the Blue Ridge owned that property and then sold it to Carolina Memorial Sanctuary. And we have an existing agreement that that land will always be connected and open. So there's no problem with the trails being closed. The property above that, you can see it says blessed way, et cetera. There's existing parking. There is a labyrinth that's open to the public that has a pavilion. There's shade trees. There's places that, that there could be benches for walkers to be under trees. And we've, we've developed, you know, a line drawing of how we think this might look. You had asked before if we had devised plans. Yes, we have. And the initial request was to have about $32,000 to, to have a professional civil engineering and landscape architectural plan. So we know where to put the outdoor toilets, where to put the trails, all of the things that have to be done to, to make it a proper facility. Um, so what do we have in place now? We've got 10 acres that we're offering. We've got great views. We've got a patio. We have parking lots, the labyrinth and the pavilion. On May 6th, the same day, we'll, we will be, Unity will be at the Mills River Day. And we'll also be hosting and open to the whole public labyrinth day. So people can learn about that and from an educational point of view. And it's going to be a special kind of park in the sense that it's passive, a place where people can go, it's quiet, there won't be ball games. There won't, you know, be all the activities that happen here. There are wonderful activities, but there are a lot of walkers that want to go and be in a more peaceful environment. Um, so this is just some other views of the patio and, and the beautiful labyrinth. And you can see there's a lot of shade there. We have a couple of picnic tables already and we'd have more. So we're looking at this, we're at stage one. And you can see the number of collaborators there and the dollar signs are people that are willing to put money into this. And we really hope that we can add the town of Mills River to this since it's, it's for the, the residents of Mills River. We've got quite a ways to go if we develop further. It could be that we simply put in trails and benches and parks and outdoor toilets and it's, it's well-used and, and that's all there is. Hopefully a performance space will, we're applying to the Tourism Development Authority of Henderson County and are just waiting for their decision. So again, it would be trails, the labyrinth and a meditation garden. We have the tables, the picnic tables, patio. And you can see what we've already requested funding for. We don't know if we're getting that yet, but we're asking you, of course, for the ARPA funds for the master plan. Now, the overview of the request that went out said it was for expenditures such as building repairs, equipment acquisition or other one-time expenditures. So the development of the campus plan by professional is a one-time expenditure. Mr. Gallup is going to speak to an alternative if the, if the town, you asked once before, like it would be a whole lot easier not to just do a plan because it might just end up on the shelf. I wanted you to see who our collaborators are. But if that is a concern, one of the collaborators has offered, and he'll speak to that, another offer that if you feel more comfortable that the ARPA funds would meet the intent to actually pay for gravel and grading and benches for residents, you know, we, we can do that. So we're in the planning process. We have to have a campus plan at some point because we're going to go to the Arts Council and the Z Smith Reynolds and North Carolina Rails and Trails and things of that type. Um, so I, to the Parks and Rec Committee, I asked the question, is there a need for a passive park? The answer was yes. There was a lot of feedback that we need more places where people can go and walk. We, we want feedback on the idea. We need information and collaboration with the town and Noel's department and the specialists here. And then we've also invited, as this project goes forward, that we would like to have a member of the town or the Parks and Rec on our team. And just so you know, our team is completely voluntary. It's people that are just dedicated to the idea. We would be managing it and be the implementation. So we're not asking the town to oversee grading or the trails or anything like that. And another question that was asked was how would it be maintained? At the moment, Unity is willing to offer their 24-hour-a-day maintenance person to help take care of, of the park. Because we know, you know, there's dog poop bags and trash and all those things that have to be dealt with. Would we ever come back to the town and say, wow, this is so popular, we need, you know, more? I hope so. That, you know, that would say that we've had, we've got a, a great idea that's being well-used. And these are just some images of some of the art and things that may be on there if we get funding for it, but we want to have interpretive trails for the residents. And I think, I think I've answered all the questions that you have. I just wanted you to know that, you know, we've spent a couple of years working on this and getting partners and very much have appreciated the support of the town and the town staff on this. I worked this out that the money that's being received from ARPA based on 7,300 residents is $301 per person about. And if we received the total of $54,500 that we're asking for, for the two projects, that represents 2.5% of the total ARPA funds. And to give you an idea of what that is, that is less than the cost of buying one salad at Wendy's for every resident in Mills River. So for less than $8, we could have access to this 20-acre park very quickly. And to the performance space, frankly, that could be available within the next 60 days. And all of these projects are really worthwhile. I haven't heard one tonight that I didn't think was worthwhile. So that's why it's a dilemma and I really appreciate that you're listening to us. And, you know, the elegant thing is all the money's not been allocated. So I hope, I, I personally, you know, as, as a taxpayer, would love to see all these projects because they're, they're really all very worthwhile.
Any questions?
I think the last time, I think it was the mayor asked about, would there ever be a charge for people to access this? And they said, not at this time. Somebody said, not at this time. But that left open the door for maybe in the future, you would not be charging.
Well, you know, we just don't know. The, the plan is that it's completely and utterly free. I've been involved with two other activities like this in the UK and they were free for many, many years. And then frankly, they became so oversubscribed that we had to introduce a small charge just to limit the number of people to be safely in there. That again, would be an elegant dilemma. I don't see that there's going to be a charge. I mean, it is our intention that this is open and free. People are coming on the property now. We don't stop them. Happy to, you know, to open it.
Do y'all have insurance and liability?
We do. And part of the requirements for applying was to have a certain amount of insurance and, and we meet that. And then actually, Mr. Gallup is an insurance broker and would advise us on that. And we have spoken with the insurance agent at Unity. We, you know, you can't insure a house till you build it. So we can't insure it until we have it. We can't insure it until we know what's going to happen there, how many people are there, et cetera. We can park 400 cars? 300 cars, something like that? 275 cars. You know, we may need to have more parking. We don't know that, but we know that now we can, we can park that many. And there's, and the Parks and Rec had a lot of good questions. You know, there's all kinds of questions about, you know, security and And there's, and the Parks and Rec had a lot of good questions. You know, there's all kinds of questions about, you know, security and blue lights. We will have to cross those bridges when we know what's happening. And there's a lot of funding out there for that, those activities.
I see there's a hand coming out of the ground.
Yeah, there sure is.
And the other one looks like a face.
Yeah. One of the things that is envisioned, particularly with the North Carolina Arts Council, is to have what is called living art on the property. And like the head that you see, th- these are sculptures that like Warren Wilson College and other places would work with us on. The, the body at the top, which is called the Mud Maiden, is part of the Eden Project in the UK. And I helped worked on that many years ago. People come from all over the world to see her. And also the, the giant's head that's popping out. The, the stones in the middle. Those are outside of Las Vegas and they were going to be taken down after two years, but 16,000 people, a oh, million people came to see them in two years. Now, we don't want that to happen in Mills River. But we, you know, we are envisioning that's part of the passive park to have, that it has art in it that is inspiring and part of nature. And interpretive s- signs, things of that type. So there's a lot we don't know how we will handle because we're just not there yet.
Are you requesting ARPA money from any other source? Or have you received ARPA money from?
No, but no, we have not.
Any other questions?
I got a question as far as seems like you're wanting to partner with like a lot of different conserving Carolina colleges, us. So, and then the pavilion becomes open. Who gets precedent? Are you going to come up with like, you know, like here we have online things and like ways to rent it out? But like me sitting here, I have to think of the residents of Mills River. So how, how does Mills River get first in line?
Well, conserving Carolina is working with us on the land and the restitution of the land and the pond. So they don't have a need to use the property. Conserving Carolina, I mean, Carolina Memorial Sanctuary already owned the 10 acres. They are very much open to this idea and, and encouraging us to do it. Because we need access to their property to make it, you know, a much bigger park. STEEP, which is Storytelling Education and Arts Programs, we're a small nonprofit. I don't see, I mean, we're not going to be vying for use of the pavilion very often. I mean, we might partner with the town and say, would you like us to do this, you know, historical storytelling event for Mills River that we provide the performers, something like that. Confluential is purely an educational and financial partner. Is that right, Peter? Okay. So they don't have a, a need. They believe in the product, project. Now Tourism Develop Authority, we're asking them for money for benches and toilets and all the hardware. They, we don't know, we don't know if we'll get the grant. But, you know, they're interested because it enhances parks and tourism in the area. We applied for something called Destination Enhancement Grant because it means that, you know, between Sierra Nevada and the Arbor Freedom, there would be a great place for people to stop. And particularly on that side of the town, of, yeah, the town. You know, if it ever got so popular that we had to have a schedule of events, you know, that, that's a great thing. And, and that would mean that we would be getting funds from the Arts Council and places like that.
Whatever benefit, however much better we can make this, the, the people that would get to enjoy the most of the residents of Mill River because they're here all the time.
Any other questions?
Well, thank you very much.
And that is all for our list of applicants who submitted applications earlier this month. We do have one that came in, he saw, heard from earlier this evening from the Lions Club, which was submitted prior to the deadline, but in paper form, not electronic. And so unfortunately it was missed. So I just wanted to share that.
Would this be an appropriate time for me to just add my three or four minutes of comment on this project?
On the Unity project? Yes, if you feel free.
So. Remember last time I asked you to use your imagination? And to my knowledge, you men have, and women have already used your imaginations. I did a little looking. And I know that Randy, you said about being on this council, that what we want to do is we want to see what this place, Mills River should look like in 15 to 20 years and plan towards that. And so that's what this project is about. You also said that the town park is one of our greatest assets. Well, here's another town park. Jeff, you said, we cannot sacrifice our rural character. Well, we're not, this is not an apartment project or a manufacturing facility. This is a park. And Mr. Cantrell, you said that you're in this for the generations to come. We don't roll this thing up. Once it's rolled out, it's, it's here and it will serve the town for a long time. As a trustee of one of the financial partners, Confluential Charitable Trust, Ms. Fotsler said that there might have been some question from the council about whether they wanted to sink money into a plan. Well, I'm going to take that worry away. Confluential Trust will pay for the plan. All right. So that's a big expense. But what we would ask is, we don't, we're not, I'm not saying that we don't want the money. We'll use it for something else in this project. All right. So I'll, I'll cover the plan. At the same time, you have a matching fund requirement of 10%. I'm going to double that. I'm going to put my money where my mouth is. 20% matching. So. That's all I have to say. We want this. And, and you'll want it too. You'll be proud. You'll say it was your idea when it's all over.
That's okay.
We don't care.
Well, we give credit where credit is due. Y'all are working the hardest. Daniel, was that all we have on that? Counsel, after hearing all this tonight, I would, me personally, I would like to take a little time to think this over. Especially with the new effort we've got. And all the new information we got. What we would do with this, if it's okay with staff. If anybody objects to that, I'd be willing to hear a reason why we want to make motion on this tonight and move on. Think it over a few days and we'll put it back on. I don't know what our next agenda looks like.
We'll take a look at the, the schedule. I'll, I'll say, just for the public's benefit, we'll put it on the next available agenda.
We need to make it, we need to make it happen. We just want to make sure we spin it in the right spot.
Right.
Best we can. Everybody okay with that? All right, we'll move on to Land Preservation Committee appointments.
This item, council, is a follow-up from a couple of weeks ago. Back in March, there was a discussion about establishing a land preservation committee to develop the rules and procedures and policies necessary for the town to develop farmland or open space preservation program. Last meeting, the council decided to establish that committee. Be made up of two members of the town council, two members of the planning board, two members of the agriculture advisory committee, one member of the Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee, and one member at large. So since that meeting, most of our boards have met. The planning board has recommended appointing Brian Ross and Jim Foster. Agriculture Advisory Board has recommended appointing Bradley Johnston and Kirby Johnson. Parks and Trails Advisory Committee has recommended John Case. There are two applications for members at large. And then of course, there are the two council seats that need to be filled. So it's the board's pleasure on who they'd like to appoint with those recommendations in mind.
I've read both the applications we got and they're both good.
One of them's an attorney. It probably wouldn't be a bad idea to have an attorney on board. They can all wait.
No, I wish all our applications for volunteers were as comprehensive and as well thought out as these two. So it's a tough decision based on paper, but I'll, defer to Councilman Austin's comment of if we can bring in another aspect or perspective, that would be helpful.
So with that being said, is are we needing to also approve the other recommendations as well, correct? Do we need to discuss council members? Maybe just tie it all in together the best we can? Maybe make it one motion to?
It might be easier for you to break it up. Maybe start with the committees that have made recommendations and you could do that as a group. If that's the way council wants to go.
The Ag has recommended Bradley Johnston and Kirby Johnson. If everybody's okay with that, I might make a motion and we'll look for a second on those two.
Well, in all trust, each respective group polled these individuals. They didn't get volunteered while they weren't present or anything like that.
That's true.
They were asked. Hopefully that's the case. As such, I'll move that, that we appoint Bradley Johnston and Kirby Johnson to the Land Preservation Committee and the Advisory Board.
I got a first, a second? Randy, Randy second. Any discussion on it for us? Here in the, all in favor? Any opposed? Okay, so the planning was.
Brian Ross and Jim Foster.
Y'all are okay with that? I'd look for a motion for those two.
I'll make that motion. You, you make it and I'll second it.
Randy, ready to?
I'll second.
You're saying it's been a long time. Okay. Any discussion? Any none? All in favor? Any opposed? And then we had.
Parks and Trails.
John Case.
That's right.
John Case. For I'll do him, or make a motion for him in a second.
I'll move, we point John Case to the Land Preservation Committee.
Jeff, second?
I'll second.
Sandra second? Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Now we're down to council members. Oh, yeah, we could do those. We do that large.
What kind of time are y'all looking at meeting? No idea.
Time isn't time of day.
Well, how many times are they going to meet? Like with us, we met once.
Yeah, I, I would expect this would take four or five meetings over the next few months.
Do you want a motion on that large position? I'll make motion at Lisa Marino. Is that, is that the name I can?
That's right.
Okay. We appoint her.
About a second? Thank you, James. Any discussion? All in favor?
Randy, do you have time to do this?
I would love to. I wouldn't lie, throw my head in.
Somebody. Jeff, you interested at all? Just trying to.
I would gladly serve if needed, but I'm happy to have Mr. Cantrell.
I'm good with it.
Either way.
Yeah, I'm good with.
I think Randy needs to be on it for sure. He spearheaded this whole movement, so I'd like to see him continue to lead the effort.
I appreciate it. If you guys think Jeff's better, you're not going to make me mad.
Well, my biggest concern is we're all working people. Everyone is sitting here. So, and I know my plate is full. So I am looking for some court now to help Randy with attention. And saying that, make sure if you, if we nominate you, that you have the time to do it. They're going to lean on us pretty hard as council members to get all these questions I ask and answer.
And we've done a, we've got a fairly good blueprint to go by. So I think it's going to be a
A little easier than.
Pretty, we're not reinventing the wheel here. So it's.
I'll move, we appoint James Cantrell and Randy Austin to the Land Preservation Committee.
I got a first, I'm a second. Sandra second. Any sketch? Any none? All in favor? Any opposed? We should have a full committee, correct?
That's it.
Sir. Any idea when that first meeting will be?
Oh, sir. Soon, soon.
All right, we'll move along to the resolution 2023-03 to oppose Senate Bill 317. This is the workforce housing.
Yes, sir. This, this resolution is in front of you this evening at the request of Councilwoman Gude in opposition to Senate Bill 317, which is just a quick reminder, is an affordable housing bill, which is great on its, on the surface. Everyone, I think everyone's supportive of affordable housing. However, this preempts local zoning regulations and would allow affordable housing projects, which are a minimum of 10 acres in size, to be placed in any zoning district without limits on density or anything like that. And then the, the big one I think that is most concerning is the affordability guarantee is only, is only good for a year. So after that, the home can be sold for a market rate. So we've drafted a, we've drafted a, excuse me, we have prepared a resolution following some other jurisdictions work and then some of our own. So we're happy to make changes, answer questions that was in front of you tonight.
Any questions on this? For the public, this was a bill proposed by Tim Loff, or sponsored by Tim Loff, as I understand it, to ten acre tracts or larger for affordable housing would, would eliminate any county or municipal regulations on that land. So setbacks, size, density, green space, anything would be washed off the table. And as the manager spoke of, one year time limit on the affordability of it. You know, like if you're the person to move in, yes, but if you stay there for a year longer, you can sell it for a reasonable market rate and no, no question about it. So it's under my understanding that this board consensus is opposed to that. So we're passing this resolution hopefully tonight. With that being said, I'll take a.
I just wanted to say something about this. This has a, this has the makings of making having more impact on a town like Mill River than any other municipality because we've got lots of 10 acre tracts in the town of Mill River. Whereas very few established, long-term municipalities have very few 10 acre tracts. So this could change the way anybody ever envisioned Mill River ever being. And if we could make this language any stronger, I think you did a good job on it. Put a few red faces on there. Put a few red faces on there or something.
And as a builder, and as a builder, you know, it also, as high as land is in Mills River, all of a sudden it makes ten acre tracts are more, more, um, affordable. Cause you can do more with it than you can before. So not that I had ever do that, but I'm just saying how others have done that. So, uh, I would like to make a motion, pass this resolution.
I'll make a motion that we pass the resolution to oppose the Senate Bill 317 addressing the workforce housing crisis.
You got a first, about a second?
Um, excuse me, do you also have an intent to set that somewhere?
Yes.
You might want to add that to your motion.
With the intent that we?
To deliver it. It's getting like, um, with the intent that we send it to, um, Tim Mopet? Senator Mopet's office. Um, maybe all I represented is?
Yeah, all represented.
Our state delegation.
Second?
I'll second that motion.
Jeff, second? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Here, none?
Okay, get caught up and move on to the accessibility for the Parks Grant contract.
Mayor and council, I'm going to stop talking for a moment and hand things over to Nicole Swett to present this item.
Because it's late, um, but as you all know, we have, uh, been awarded the accessibility for Parks, the Parks and Recreation Trust Fund, um, that grant. Um, so before you, in your packet, you have a copy of the contract that the state requires to receive that money. Um, essentially, we have, um, received a $263,379 grant, um, to do playground renovations and trail connections, um, for that project. Um, our match for the town will be $50,713. Um, we have allocated $40,000 of the federal Powell money, which would leave the remaining $10,713 that would come out of town funds, uh, for this $314,000 project, uh, dollar project. And just as, so you all are aware, um, we do have to pay contractors directly, and it is a reimbursement grant. So just so you know, that will, we will have to pay that full 314, and then we will submit, uh, quarterly refunds for that money. Um, and essentially, uh, what I'm asking you tonight is if you all want to accept this money, uh, just give Mayor Gantz permission to sign the contract, and then I will send it off to Raleigh, so we can get that full signed, and um, we will have three years to run through the project under the.
Yep.
Any questions? I'm happy to answer them.
And I'll just add then, and with your budget presentation coming up, you'll see this as an expenditure, $314,000, but you'll also see on the revenue side, a grant coming in, that $263,000.
Any questions?
I only had one. Was there a reason that we couldn't use the Powell money for the entire amount that the town would be responsible for?
We, uh, Powell money can only go to the sidewalk portion of it. It can't cover the whole thing. All right. We do this, we can get started immediately?
Once it's signed, it'll be sent to Raleigh to be fully executed where the flood, but once the Department of Natural Resources signs it and sends it back to us, then we can start moving forward.
Any gaps?
I'll move that we authorize Mayor Gantz to, approve the NC part of project agreement.
Thanks.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? Any opposed? Peter, I hope to catch you on the spot, but while you're here, does your organization, uh, help with any of this land, uh, farmland preservation or anything of that nature? Or do you have people in your industry that all that might be willing to contribute to the help of that, like we've set aside $500,000 for land, farmland preservation, open land preservation? Is there organizations like yours that, that could help us in this?
You know, I don't know, but, uh, I'll look into it. And I know that we can. You know, we, I sound like I'm, I'm, I'm just rolling in the dust.
I know what you're saying.
I don't have so much.
Right.
Conserving, Conserving Carolina.
We have had them out here to talk to us, but we're, we're looking for every possible resource to get this thing close. $500,000 sounds like a lot of money. But when you're trying to do what we're trying to do, we need all the outside help we can get, of course. Yeah.
I will say there are a tremendous number of grants for land preservation. And, I mean, it's, it's, it's a, a, a Google search and research activity. But, you know, there, there is, there is some funding out there.
Okay. For some reason, you have the one, see one go through that you think needs to be our attention, please give someone our mayor's staff a call so we can jump right on it. Okay, thank you.
All right, we'll move on to staff updates.
Uh, all, all I'll say is that, um, as, um, spring is in, in, as summer's coming and everybody starts planning vacations, if you make sure you either let myself or Daniel know when you're planning to be out of town, so we can make sure if we need you or whatever, we can plan around it.
That's all you have, Sue?
Yes.
All right, Nicole, Parks, right?
Super brief. I think a few people mentioned it tonight, but May sixth, the Mills River Day, if you didn't get the message, it's also opening day of the farm market, so start your day in farm market, come on over to Mills River Day. It's a really great day.
Thank you. Michael, plan, right?
Uh, just real brief, thanks for supporting the resolution against Senate Bill 317. There's been a flurry of, uh, legislative activity in the state, uh, legislature. Two others we're keeping an eye on, um, and the town manager will communicate this to you as these develop is House Bill 537, which revises, uh, the 160D statutes to require local governments to permit multifamily housing by right in all areas zone for highway business, business office and general business, and prohibits application of design standards to multifamily in those districts. That's one that could affect the town that we're keeping an eye on. The other one is House Bill 409, um, which basically would allow accessory dwelling units on any parcel of land where there's a single family dwelling with limited restrictions. So we're just keeping an eye on those, and, um, as they develop, we'll bring them to you.
Someone asked me the other day about 409, and they want to know if, if that was already permitted in Mills River. An excuse or whatever, and I really didn't have the answer. I told you, I don't think it at all.
I don't think so. Um, our code doesn't consider accessory dwellings at all. So because we have the town-wide residential density, density requirement of one dwelling unit per point six nine acres, that basically applies to any dwelling. So that, basically, the, this would supersede that and allow a, a principal dwelling and then an accessory dwelling on any parcel.
That same person asked me, well, if I have five acres, could I put multiple units on it, so?
Only in mixed use.
Only in mixed use.
Correct.
Thank you. Right, that's all you got. We're going to the town manager.
Uh, no updates for you this evening, uh, but I'd like to just, one housekeeping matter, we don't need to have that closed session, so if you would please amend your agenda and strike that from that, rea-, that would be appreciated, please.
Okay, so we'll do that. You need that amended by motion?
Yes, please.
Okay, somebody make a motion to amend the agenda to eliminate closed session from today.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Randy.
I'll second.
Sandra second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Here, none? Any council comments?
Here, none? I got a break one.
Okay.
Thanks again, Michael, for the, all the work on the smart gun. I did play on it. I told him I played on it. It is, um, it's interesting. And I will say, like, you know, we get the, the weekly reports, you know, your eyes get tired by the time we get down to yours. He's busy. Just what's on there. I mean, round of applause, thanks.
Anything else?
I was gonna say, I'm, believe I'm gonna have a conflict with our next meeting. My youngest son graduates from college, and I'll be in South Carolina Friday morning, so I don't think I'll be here Thursday night to just pay the meetings.
Staff, make note of that, please, and we won't be looking for him. All right. Anything else? Any, any motion to adjourn, please?
I'll make a motion.
Yeah, you made it. Sandra second?
Yeah, I'll second.
All in favor? Aye.